Thank you everyone. Good evening. Thank you so very much for joining us. I hope everyone had a great summer and they're excited and all about. Mr. Nelson, I haven't seen you in so long, my goodness, how are you?
Doing very well.
I told my parents you were here tonight. I was excited.
They're here now.
Oh, there you go. Right, because they kind of made it. Okay, so the time is done as well. I'd like to officially have this meeting ordered. Roll call please.
Nelson, LeMire, Crade, Blackman, Here, Crade, Rista, Here, Cora.
Here and then Cora is present. We have lots of good stuff on the agenda, so we are going to keep moving along. I have this sheet for audience comments and we do not have any takers. So, we will move to superintendent's report.
Well, thank you so much. Welcome to the first board meeting of what is now the official start for the 2019-2020 school year. All our staff members reported to work this morning and we kick off our professional development days at the elementary level with capture kids arts trainings for all our new elementary staff and all of our current elementary staff, all our new partner teachers. So, I could hear them as they were working today. A lot of good feedback, a lot of laughter, a lot of clapping and just connecting around some really important strategies and tools for the rest of this year. Meanwhile, this crop with her team and all the partner teachers are really getting busy at Parker, so they got that clapping for success and focusing on the expectation for their content building forward. And we have two full days of training, obviously Monday and Tuesday, and then our district day is this coming Wednesday. Our keynote speaker is going to be Mr. Duane Reed. You remember, Mr. Reed is a former student who got engaged at Parker Junior High. He's a D-161 grad, he's a current teacher in CPS and he's widely known for his back-to-school songs. So, should be a pretty good keynote, about forty-five minutes, that'll kick off probably around nine fifteen or so. If you want to get our teachers back to the building, so if you're in the area and you'd like to join us, please feel free to do that that afternoon. But again, this is Wednesday, the afternoon at three o'clock, we have chocolate wall. Thanks to Meyer for donating all the chocolate. We ended out at the back-to-school celebration last Saturday night. It's always great to see the encouraging messages that families leave to students, hopefully come out and join us. And then our first day of schools is Thursday. Can't believe it's already here, but we're excited. It should be a beautiful day. We'll post lots of pictures on social media, so everyone can kind of keep an eye on it if you're not going to be here. Got one of the Boo Boo breakfasts, which is about to be marking children. So, just keep it on around through the website or the Facebook pages, things of that nature. And then, same with my official update, I also uploaded our enrollment spreadsheet. Just a little bit, this is where our numbers currently stand. Notice the pink areas, those are basically those classrooms are closed. Yellow, we're keeping an eye on. Overall, our numbers look pretty good. The partner numbers are suspect. We, they're not down on one hundred fifty-two yet, but they're down. It's a skyward shield, we're trying to work through it, make sure it's accurate numbers. The elementary's all feel pretty good about. Overall, elementary's are down slightly, some schools are up. Pretty evenly distributed, distributed on along, along. Class sizes, kindergarten looks pretty good overall. That was a problem for us last year. But again, the class sizes at Western and kindergarten are just about finished. And I feel the first grade, second grade at Flossmore Hills and secondary at Western, those classes are basically closed. It's a local end of doing as students continue to register. We'll follow them to Heather Hill School in K, potentially first grade, we don't think that's the Flossmore Hills, student comes in the second.
Can you, would it be possible, moving forward with this, I love the note that this is terrific, just to have a reference for the previous year of what the numbers were for kindergarten, point of mind, like seeing where average kindergarten numbers look like throughout the district from junior year. Am I missing that on your floor?
No, can we keep it separate? I can give you all the information. This is, this is the private, the public facing document.
Yeah.
That'll illustrate the assistance used to list it. So, I don't want to clutter it too much.
Yeah.
We absolutely have all of it. So, are you looking for previous years?
Yeah, literally, just, you know.
Class size.
Yeah, maybe even like at some point in October, it might be nice to see once all the, the last minute, you know, August dancing sort of settles down. Just to get a broad view of kids coming in, when they come in. And I have, I would really love to see that for Parker too, which would be very interesting and relevant to me.
Absolutely.
So, can you talk just a little bit more about that Parker registration we have given?
This, it's a coding issue right now. We think that number is actually closer to nine hundred, which would certainly be a decrease because there were nine twenty-seven last year. We think accurately around nine hundred, I hear it shows seven seventy-five. But again, it's a coding issue inside of the sky. So, we're, Corey and I were talking about that today, thinking we have to.
So, when do you feel like you have a more accurate number?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Get through the end of this week. We saw a couple of kids rolling in, we had some transfer out, situations that we're dealing with, fairly static at the elementary's, but I believe one of the, should people in and out. I think it's a separate one.
In light of the social media chain questioning.
Sure.
Would you be kind enough to provide just a general overview of how we kind of reach a maximum limit of twenty-five in some classrooms and thirty in other classrooms? Again, just in general.
Absolutely. Well, I think we really try to keep our K-two numbers under control as much as possible. All of our class sizes, we want to keep manageable. If they get too high, it's unfortunate. So, if you look, you know, last year we had some sections that would hit twenty-eight, I mean, third through fifth grade, twenty-eight in class. It's not the worst situation. It's not ideal. That's certainly manageable. K-two though, twenty-five was a little bit. And I think our challenge being that we have neighborhood schools is that we'll always have situation like, you know, first grade at Flossmore Hills where it's, there's kindergarten at Western, there's a section of twenty-five there, then there's a section a mile and a half, not even a mile and a half away, at Heather that's at seventeen. So, I think a couple of things go into it. What are we trying to accomplish as a, as a school district when it comes to staffing? And they have to be manageable class sizes, puts our teachers in the best position to be successful. We also have to remember that when you think about school funding, you have three Title One elementary schools and one, that's Western then. And so, our conversation around lower class sizes, I know some feedback was, why don't we just add a teacher at Western and drop those class sizes to nineteen or eighteen? Absolutely. If we're willing to do that at Western, that means we have to commit to Serena and Flossmore Hills and Heather and take those class sizes down to fifteen because it's comparability issue. The backup they have load math on that is around three orders of million dollars. So, as we're choosing how to spend our money, well, that was just for the staff, we have to also figure out which classrooms we would put those in. And so, I think it really just becomes a matter of feel. You know, I believe, you know, we had twins kind of walk into Flossmore Hills and knew those class sizes were getting close, but we ended up enrolling them anyway, we took those classes to twenty-five and I know that they'll be successful. But, you know, these are tough conversations. People say, well, hey, I moved into this neighborhood and go to that school, and I completely get it. Most of the people that we overflowed last year chose to stay at the new school instead of go back to their old school, which I think is very positive. Those, Heather, we overflowed almost everybody to Heather last year. So, kudos to Heather Hill for just having the welcoming environment, but it's also the work that we've done to generate consistency between our buildings so that we're not offering different experiences. So, just in a nutshell, we try to have target class sizes, they're not hard or fast. I think we'll always continue our conversations as a board on how do we want to respond when we do have grade levels that bump up against our targets, especially when we have class sizes in other buildings that are much lower than what we have. Is that what's your question?
Right, and I was actually asking that more everybody.
Okay.
In that sort of mind. And the second part of the follow-up for that would be, can you also explain to us how it is that we make determinations on when children are moved from one school to another school and how we make the determination, whether we split payments at Parker or don't at that one?
Well, the second part is we never split payments, ever. And as a matter of fact, we, we try to carry that perspective in some other situations for the family who had a child who went over special programs, asked for permission transfer to try to keep, you know, the boys together. We kind of bend over factors to make that happen for them. Just, guys, just call it a life issue, going to one open house, one set of parent teaching towers, so it's reasonable. So, we never split payments. As a board, we talked about where those numbers are. So, last year, third to fifth really kind of using an upper ceiling around twenty-eight and then K-two, you know, really around twenty-five. You know, I believe we were a little closer to twenty-six last year. Remember, we added another section to our primary staffing for this year to bring some of those numbers down. These kids worked for the most part. But we really try to keep those numbers to twenty-five, we have twenty-six, second grade at Flossmore Hills, but again, I would consider those classes closed, especially when you look at the number of seats that they have available at Heather. So, we can always adjust those and we can always take now, yeah, we could look a bit better with a target of twenty-two at kindergarten through second or twenty-five and third through fifth, and then what we do is we go back and say, okay, that's going to generate this many sections of third grade, for example. And then we have a conversation as a board about whether or not that's feasible just with space.
Just a little tiny bit of history. I mean, I've been in the district for almost seventeen years and I've never experienced a year where this was not a challenge at one or two of the schools, just not ever. And I've certainly had kids, my own kids at my steering group who had seventeen kids in their class, I've had classes in Western that had twenty, I mean, so it's always been, so we don't, we purposely didn't create a hard, fast rule so that, to allow for flexibility and for us to, you know, prevent or to use whatever expression we give to grant him and his team to be able to make on a case by case basis. So, but I, I mean, we certainly had, you know, lots of, well, not lots, but some instances in the past where this was a much more concerning picture than what we see right now. So, I don't know, but not to give you any additional or people additional comfort on these numbers, but just a little bit of background, that it's, it's always an issue.
Is this, is it possible that we're not conveying that message in terms of how we can position what the norms are to the community, there's something we can do so that there's better understanding in the future?
I mean, perhaps we could think about, I mean, so part of the challenge is each year we have, you know, new families in the district, right? And so, in kindergarten, parents, you know, and then you also have parents who've been in for several years who are used to this, so it's how do you, where do we put the messaging so that it is consistent, so that regardless of how long you've been in the district, there's a go-to place, so that you at least have an understanding of what the process is, even though there is no hard, fast rule that, you know, at twenty-three students, we cut it off. But maybe there is, you know, a place to highlight, because there is a policy written on it, so, so maybe there's a place to put it so that it's, it can be highlighted and parents have that a little too spot for.
Right, and I would think that probably would be one of the times to have that out there, like really on signs, just when they're doing registration, so that they know, like, here it is in, so it's not, they didn't have to do it.
Excellent. Tell me a little bit. Thank you.
Any other questions about enrollments?
Okay. Learning instruction, learning and instruction can be important.
Carolyn, you want to share as our lone board representative?
Do you want to read it first or we'll fill it?
Sure, yeah, absolutely. So, we're really focused on school group planning and we're in a meeting with Ann Paul, myself, Carolyn and Cam, focus on types of goals that are writing, using the long assessment of readiness data, you know, the big rocks. Obviously, attendance is always an issue, proficiency is always an issue, achievement gaps, which ones we're going to use. Obviously, we chose special evidence, make sure we're kind of being really focused on what's most important. Quick look around in our preliminary cohort data, which is what we'll talk about tonight. Again, it's still preliminary, has the state's finalizing everything and there's a couple, just notified that there's a couple of scores we have to take a look at. So, but again, using our preliminary high art data as the main measurement piece, talk about the school, the general planning for the learning instruction team this year, continuing it with science since we're going out to steam classes. We'll have a science recommendation, I think, we'll look into some January to the board, all types of materials for the classes in general, and then just working, you know, focus on our NGSS integration over the year.
I'll add that, there's a note here that said, how do we express to parents, how do our schools communicate to parents when and if their student needs additional support or how they are achieving? And one of the things that it said was, we get some feedback from students that either end at fifth grade or they end at Parker and say, I didn't really even know that my child wasn't up to par or he or she should have been. And one of the things that we, that we like to see is more communication with the parents about their specific child and where they are achieving, how far they have to go to the, either to grade level or to wherever we know they should be to be successful at the end of break up, at the end of the grade or at the end of a semester or at the end even of a unit. Just being more transparent and more clear with the parents so that there isn't confusion and fog around what the expectations are there.
So, did you all talk about how, that communication, how and what that communication?
Well, we kind of said, we want it. And that needs to be figured out.
Well, but I think, you know, to Carolyn's point, it was kind of, this is, we're bold. There's a couple of ways that we can do that. Canvas, I think, will help us tremendously. Not only will parents have access to types of work, but it connects the sky, it's all great and we'll get a pretty quick indication of what's happening. Were we updated with, what we're doing, updating info for Parker's father? As we just talked about it as our team, we already have a ton of data. We've got common form assessments in our literacy program, math program, higher school monitoring data for info, we have all these things. Now, if we're true to being honest, I don't think we send enough of that home and then send it home with enough context that parents can understand what this means in the grand scheme of things. And our teachers do a great job of sending on classwork and artifacts and all of those sort of things. But as a district, our messaging, I think, can be, so we're going to work on all of those pieces because I think we have a lot to do already. And if we get better pushing it out and showing the parents how to take that, whether it's a performance-based assessment in one of the literacy modules, for example, how do you take that and apply it to some level of understanding through your child? I think we could, we could do it pretty well. Any other questions?
Yeah, I mean, I think so. I think that's a great recommendation. I think part of it is also, how do you empower parents to even be able to ask the questions? I mean, we're all parents, right? And so, many parents who don't question anything that's happening at school, many parents don't even know what questions to ask. So, where we have a lot of data that we, that, you know, we sit on, I mean, you're going to do what you do with it, but parents don't even know that the data exists. So, they don't even know what questions to ask or that they should be asking questions. So, it's, so part of the messaging has to be, how do we empower parents so that they know that part of being an advocate for your kids and being the biggest cheerleader is not just, hey, how's he doing, right? But to really go in armed with data and understanding that there, there is a plan, right? And I need you to be able to articulate this plan to me and where the roadmap looks like. And I have my own personal experience, which is not very current with me, so I have a good sense of, and I am the parent that goes in saying, you know, I need this, I need this, I need this, I need this. But we, we need to find a way to empower our parents so that they know what is available to them and then educate them on how to use it.
I've got a question about committee. I know one of the things that has advanced about is testing, I already touched on it, and trying to reduce the testing where there's not, where there's redundancy and we're not getting great bang for. Is this committee just looking at where testing can either be added or subtracted and what types of assessments, etc.?
At some point, certainly, this team, the district leadership team, our admin council, I think they'll all probably take a bite of that.
No, we, well, we're going to talk about the data today. We looked at that from there. Okay.
Yeah, just briefly, before we hop off of this, just a couple of updates upcoming. We have our strategic plan planning team meeting on the morning of the nineteenth. Our finance committee, which is a real, that's a busy meeting, typing up all of the last pieces on the budget. So, any questions, want to get them over to our finance committee representatives, sitting to my left, that'd be fantastic, either David or Michelle would be led to entertain your questions.
That's the nineteenth?
Yes, that's the nineteenth in the afternoon.
What was, one was the other? Strategic plan.
Strategic plan, planning team, tell them, that's a busy day. Equidad inclusion, we're wrapping up some of our work and springing to this year, that's on the twenty-second, and then our next learning instruction is on the twenty-sixth. We need to schedule our next community engagement, so I'll talk to Steve in a few minutes.
I've got a email.
Yes, you do.
It was tonight, Monday.
It is September night before our board meeting. So, it's September ninth at six o'clock.
So, we now have five pulling function, which I'm very excited about, that is a lot. But, so, I'll be very interested in strategic planning process, just see how the work of the committees will be folded into the strategic plan.
True.
Because we certainly didn't create committees just for the sake of creating committees. And so, I think in these next set of meetings with each of the committees, that goals, goals should obviously be created for the year, what, you know, what everyone accomplished. Wouldn't want to get accomplished in each of these committees. And I think to the best that we can, calendarize all the meetings and any events that would be coming out, especially the community engagement, you know, we'll have other activities coming out besides the meeting. But I think it would be really important in each of these committees that some goals are established for this year, so that we're very clear why each month we're all meeting what we're trying to achieve this year. And then see even the strategic planning treaty, how are we going to use these committees? How's the work, the potential work of the committee is going to be folded into whatever comes out of strategic plan? And then I think it also would be great, I think the community engagement is small, but mighty, but any efforts to, you know, maybe we should have taken names, you know, Saturday night.
Oh, yeah.
Being great.
That's a very good joint committee.
Yeah, joint committee. So, any, you know, ideas people have to increase community participation on that committee, I think would be great.
Maybe a plug open house.
That's right. I think plug it open house, you know.
I could reach out to PTOs.
PTOs.
Or send them.
Use our social media, I mean, because we don't do, I think we could do a much better job of blasting out our, some of our committee meeting, especially the community activity in our office chat. Do you have those scheduled, by the way?
I think we, we have our topics from our last meeting, we've scheduled all of them, except, may I say, the six transition assessments. We had one temporarily scheduled.
So, as much stuff as we can calendarize, but we have to do a better job of just pushing our stuff out.
Well, the very first one where we announced, you know, this Hitty, he bumped, we had a ton of people.
Right.
And that was because we were excited about being part of some new, you know, having a, you know, chance to help shape the communication of the district and the, in the community. And, you know, like with many things that are new and once you get a sense of, oh, this kid's doing a really great job, I'm going to stay home and maybe work on some other things, work or whatnot. I, not to say it's a creative place, but I think if we create some exciting meaningful thing that parents would have to be involved in. I remember Mac Fleming years ago at Flossmore Hills, the president there told me a story that he used to have PTO meetings in halftime, probably that's some sort of like schooling that where kids were actually coming, so they were coming anyway. But I think that if, if you're creating the reason for them to be there other than, you know, the monthly grind of, okay, they'll come back and continue to work this project, you know, it's really, and it was people that don't feel like they need to be there, you know, I think we're going to get even numbers up or down depending on, sure, how much we're excited.
The other thing I want to point out too is, last year when I was senior chair of the PTO, one of the moms said, I speak bilingual, and she said, I haven't come because there was a language barrier. Now that I know that you speak Spanish, I can kind of say with you and then get a point across, so maybe we can meet at that too. So, that's another thing.
Okay, thank you very much.
Um, committee, um, the, just briefly, should we, um, where are we kind of, how's that holding in strategic planning at this?
So, you can better answer that because it's actually not a committee that we created, so.
Just by doing it.
Yeah.
So, it's an extension of the public leadership teams, you know, good feedback, good recommendations, things of that nature. Strategic planning wise, I'm sure that we saw a little of that, but that will primarily be handled by the actual committee, the planning team, but also the thirty-six or so people running strategic plans.
Yeah, and in the Parker, as I said, I know that a lot of discussions, a lot regarding development of a student.
Yep.
Who's beginning, dealt skills with strategic plans, that's why I asked.
Yeah.
How that's.
We will have.
We're likely to see a lot of symphysis.
Okay, we're going to move on to item number five. We have a motion, please, to approve the items listed under consent agenda. Payroll, tab appraisal recommendation, Aaron's law contract, special. Payroll, tab appraisal recommendation, Aaron's Law contract, special ed, one-on-one nursing contract, and Medicaid reimbursement bill. You have a motion to approve these items as presented. So moved. Give me a second, please.
Second.
Okay.
In a recent board update on Aaron's Law, I think I missed another, I should have said, there's a reduction, we're $850 under our 17, 18 cost, and this is at 19. Sorry, it's from a bunch of items.
Thank you. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Great, yes. Great, yes.
Yes.
Please stop, yes, in the air. Yes, correct.
Yes, and motion's passed. Next item on the agenda, there's several discussion items. First discussion item, Illinois assessment readiness, preliminary cohort data.
Please welcome Ms. Crawford up to the front end. None of this data is totally new. We're gonna be dissecting and packaging for consumption, but as it becomes more firm and finalized, they're built into using this information as they're setting their plans up in the year, you'll notice all the school group plans are focusing on, I leave on that. That's our measure that we're using to determine success. One of the measures we should see. That's one will be the supplement. And so we go over parts of the boards to really dig into our data, some things that are fantastic, some aren't. But the benefit of having honest conversations around data is that you know where we stand and we can address those issues. So I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Yes, so if you recall, on the school year, when the first year that we heard assessment changed to Illinois assessment, the data holding at this time, we are waiting to hear what the next iteration of the assessment will be, there may be additional changes to it, but now the assessment questions and the format is the same, the name change. But all of the schools did take IER this grade, which again was the former, previous name was the part. So at some other level, we have to be prepared for possibly following the target if another change comes with the actual content of the assessment or heading of the assessment. We do have notice from the state that they are looking toward, I don't know if we'll complete this year or the following year, making IER more of an adaptive test, similar to in WRA now, so that we would be able to get a better, plus, you know, in terms of rest and real time on the assessment. Also, another great thing is shares that can proceed to the data sooner. If you recall, in previous years, we got this in October or sometime, and you can absolutely can't do anything within after quite that time. So we're hoping if we happen to pull the red state, that we will continue to get the data sooner and sooner. So great part about this year is that we were able to really incorporate the IER data into our planning process, including previously, now we're really able to use what holds. So just overall, ELA by school, really please let those colors go to.
The shade that it's working on.
They're not showing, I'm going to show them the one and two. But overall, all of our schools made some growth. We had some backside of the arena by a point. We did see overall, I think all of our schools certainly want to continue pushing that. And really pleased with seeing the 18, 19 scores for the LA.
How did this compare to this state?
So we don't know if the state have a different plan. That's what's preliminary, that's part of what's preliminary about this right now. So we do have, we have our percentages that still needs to be, that's still fractionable in the state. The state will not release how Illinois did at the moment on average.
Okay, but last year, um, give them a second.
Okay.
Well, let me dug tail off of that because you know us on cam, where he was kind of implying that, okay, everybody kind of, you did well, but if the state, everyone in the state kind of did the same.
Yeah, absolutely. Well is relative right now. And that's what we've been stressing, that's part of what's preliminary right now also, because, well, we are pleased with our own growth from last year to this year, because our schools are moving and scores went up. We are, it's yet to be told what good growth is, because if the, let's say, everyone else in the state, 30 points, or, you know, more than that, then it's relatively right now. But what we can press on is that we do know that our schools will improve. So that's what we keep you completely on my side. Then MAP by school, overall, good growth, but again, in context for now, certainly wanted to see more growth in MAP at the junior high level, and that is something that we are planning for and in our play at Parker. But we're really pleased to see a upward trend in all of our schools.
Question about the MAP. Now, this is the second year of the Duke of Madison program.
You're still in it, right?
Third year. For their projections about where we start with the school at this point of the third year, and are these numbers actually going to go in there?
Can you?
Okay, so when we went to the curriculum, I'm anticipating, we were thinking that we would see a certain level of growth or projections.
You don't know, because you don't know where you're starting, right? So, you know, in theory, a third of the kids who are in that, who need scores in 2018, 19, we're kind of, I suppose, was a doubt. So we have no frame of reference. It could have been starting at 1% efficiency or some of the more at 60%, right? And so I don't know the true estimation of that. I think what we can, at least what we should be able to get now, to your point, Dave, is some normalcy, is it 3% on average, is it 5%? What should that look like if we're back throwing and kids are damaging efficiency? So I think we'll have a shot at it now, because we'll have at least two years, get that third year of data, now we've really got something significant.
But I also might hear you here in your question is, when we decided, part of the assessment of choosing what the curriculum would be, what was the assumption around how long you would actually take to actually see?
Sure.
Right, and I know that question was asked and looked at when we were going through the different examples, based on site visits and conversations you had with other schools who implemented the better.
Yeah, and we see things moving out to this point, we're, yeah, to be seeing how much we should expect to see it continue to move out, but we certainly.
Am I right?
Yeah.
Right, so I see, so the question is typically, how long does it take for us to really see the true impact of the new curriculum, whether it's on ELA or on MAP, right? And so is it five years? Like, you know, how long, how much data do you think we need to see as a district before we actually start to see the impact?
I think we're in it right now. I think we're in it. Typically, there's an implementation, if that's a teacher learning, you know, a new strategy or resetting, all those pieces. But going into our third year, now teachers are refined and they're becoming more skilled at the strategies of using. So the data that we see for this year certainly should demonstrate the bump, so this is year one, okay, but year two, we should reasonably expect if we're going to see some drastic improvement, to see it. And now it becomes a matter of what's the appropriate number of growth, you know? If you're 51%, what is a reasonable option per year? Probably somewhere between 2% or 4% of growth. And how do you generate that kind of growth?
Hard work.
Now, I, so, so I've been struggling with what to look at when I'm looking at this data. So my temptation is to look at 16, 17, and then 18, 19, to look at, on a two note, a little couple of years of growth or decline. So you can see in some instances, it's a decline. And then in other instances, it's the exact opposite in this. And I'm trying to wrap my brain around how different it looks when we're at each school, when we're attempting to standardize our practices as much as possible. And so I'm just trying to understand what you think about like opposites, schools that have the exact opposite experience, started one way and went down and started one way and went out. What is?
Yeah, it's a great question. I think this is, so IER and Parker are moment in time in assessments, and I think what we will try to standardize our teaching practices using the curriculum over the years, what we realized at the next level is really standardizing our simplification and course correction based on performance assessment. We have been using that. We are yet to really formalize, but what are we going to do on this form of assessment and presenting students are not, how will we teach differently? Not just, let's see what happens on IER, but what will we fully teach, what will we do? And those are the conversations that we're starting to have with our school improvement plans. I think what we see in variation between schools could be many factors and would not necessarily just show up on IER. It would also be indicated on performance assessment.
And my other, and maybe when we have the state data this week, it's hard for me to see all the schools, all our kids, you know, but our fifth graders, fourth graders, and third graders in the 50s, 50s, and then our middle school in the, it's not a different district, it's the same kids. That's a, that's hard for me to wrap my head around at all, because these are for sure the same people, the same kids.
Absolutely, yeah.
What possibly had, that's a big difference.
It is, it is concerning. And when we look at the cohort data, it's a similar trend across our standards, the standards that we share today, that things are more consistent at the elementary school, junior high level, something's happening that's not according to this data, not as essential to students as we want it to be. And, you know, we started having conversations at Parker, inconsistent practices, needs inconsistent results, and so that is part of our plan, really type of practices across.
I wonder too, I wonder if it's not nationwide, this is a tumultuous, unstable time in the adolescence, I mean, we'll just call it the nasty elementary room that it is. So is that the problem? Is there?
It could be.
An outside tourist who's not addressing?
It could be, but it's also, if it is, it's something that doesn't lead us to growth, because in that case, they're always going to be junior high students, they're always going to be tumultuous, it's always going to be that season of their life. So it very likely be, we have to have a response that supports them through that and wants them socially and socially, and shows them how to deal with things like that.
And I guess also from the board's perspective, I want to be able to hear if additional resources or whatever is needed as you dig into this data more carefully, more clearly, that I think as board, we're gonna support whatever is needed, if there is some missing piece that we need to support.
And so just tapping this idea, and I bring this up again and again, you know, I now have two middle schools, okay? Where, you know, a lot of these conversations around, you know, the assessment is to what degree, yes, in the classroom, is it, you have a, you know, adolescent kid who's going through changes, and you have to deal with that as through instruction, through, you know. This is very similar. You know, testing day, I know that my son, the only reason why he did well or did poorly was the degree too much he actually bought into what he was doing. He might incentivize things, he'd give you 10 bucks if you, your growth score, suddenly he's doing a lot better, you know? Whereas before, he's, and he told us, like, I asked for him, that he's just guessing his way through, you know? And I've worked at a number of schools, even prior recovery programs, where kids, their prior recovery is, they are just guessing, you know, without looking at the screen, they're all hitting one button until eventually they get it right, and then magically they get credit, which I don't think is, you know, certainly in the kid, and I don't, they're kind of, it's just, but I, when I see that drop into that canyon where suddenly this kid is fine, you know, I know that a lot of that is, they just don't feel like reading the test anymore, and they're just gonna guess who's taking it. That has to be something, as is important to the board and to the school and to the teachers, is that this is very important data to have, so that we can plan and we can see, well, was this, how, to what degree was this new curricular addition successful? You know, where can we, you know, feed this? If the test itself is not an accurate representation of what they know, and it's starting to be a representation of how much of it cares whether or not.
On that day.
On that day. You know, I think that that's something that we, I'm gonna keep asking this question because I know it's important, because in the day now, we have, you know, we have to figure out, well, was this came, is it from instruction, is it from, you know, a reality of being a middle schooler, or is it that at the beginning, the kids didn't feel like they were taking that because they didn't think it was kind of meaningful to them?
And so my question, pragmatic question, so I know I do not want to go into, you want to leave about the test, but does the test account for these sort of outliers from the hell much deviation there is? Like, so as you stated, you get the kids, wonderful, you get the kids medical board, and so if everyone's tested the same way, all these things and things happen, you know, they didn't do, they didn't do this, they, all these things went back. It doesn't account for those things, it just goes for whatever they did on the test, regardless of their.
It's across the country.
It's across the country, and I think across the country, I can pay out to require assessment previously, but I didn't too, but. Yeah, I think the, the thing we keep in mind is that, so at the end of the day, this is the, you know, our public health report at districts and at state level, so we have to do both. We have to motivate the students to want to invest this time and this task and data seriously, but it's just one element. Throughout the school year, we need to use the light of force assessment data that is aligned to the standards, so also make sure we're actually getting learning in, the students are growing, well worth the test. Because even if, you know, if your kids are tired or whatever the context is, we have to help them out, we have to also do their best, so that people will be judged, should judge.
And I've got just one more thing I want to address, for regarding the scores, particularly at Parker. So I know that over the past half a year, the board has had to make some tough decisions in terms of going to move the name of the press, the shift rule, whatever coin phrase you want to use at Parker. For me, it works consistently. Do we now have those things in place for, in fact, consistency to get new results?
No, I know only because of the schedule of Parker continues to be a major hurdle. Until we can break out of that pre-HF kind of perspective, we'll always be a little bit stunted there.
What does that mean, pre-HF?
They're 12. And, you know, the term junior high is more than just a name, it's a way of interacting and providing learning experiences for kids, just as the term middle school is a completely different philosophy than that. And I think as we have conversations around scheduling looking forward, we'll be able to address some of those things. The team is working hard, I've seen them well, and the crew over there, we've had some good experiences for kids. I have teachers emailing me about the work that's happening, but just really positive things that are happening, and so while we're not, while all of the. And so while all of the pieces aren't there, the foundation blocks are starting to build. So I feel way back, not the direction that we're heading, but there's still more to do than what I have to do. We just have to address all the next six tables.
So. The only way we will move forward. I will say though, I mean, if you, if you went back through old videotape, I mean, see what I'm on the board now?
Entry to seventh year.
So in five for me, I mean, this is not a new conversation. These questions are the exact, the exact same questions that we have been asking about Parker for years. The exact same question. And I'm really hoping that this time next year, when we are having this conversation, that there is more clarity and understanding about, I mean, you just asked your question, do we have what, like, I don't know what we need. And I don't know if, it's not fair to assume that Amell knows everything that we need right now. Or, you know, even you, I mean, but now we have a new team at Parker. I think that's renewed energy, more momentum, more importantly, what we are expecting is commitment like we have never seen before to move Parker forward so that when we are looking at this data and we're asking, do we have what we need? So we have an answer to that and we also know what it is that we need. This is just, it's not a new conversation. It is, it is a depressing conversation because we have not, you know, why is still a mystery? So what happens in sixth grade? I don't know, right? But it's not a new conversation. And so.
Our other junior high study, are they having, Jane Hart, for the junior high, and I don't know, clearly their scores and the demographics and there are a plethora of differences from here, west, east, north, south, but they may have these same jumps. And if you go to your next slide, and it is hard to look at. Cameron, when you explained this a few months ago, said you have to go diagonal with it and then you can see the, that's a staggering drop, especially seven to eight.
I think one thing to keep in mind, it is a staggering drop and some of our student groups as well, it's concerning and it's what we are working to address. I think we also have to keep in mind that these are not true cohorts, but it's, it's state's reporting that, for example, fourth grade students did that same for the students in fifth grade. It doesn't account for students who did only in fifth grade or who out, it's not the exact cohort. It is a cohort in terms of these students were in fourth, junior year, that some of them are also in fifth grade and maybe additional students entering or other students are in.
And it's why I can be wondering, then why is this such a great test? If it is such, you know, there's, there's such a wide range, you know, there's so many factors that are not being, why is this, this is a dominant state, really, you know, I guess.
I think every administration that comes in with their own, I mean, that's why it's hard to do a real, true longitudinal study, you're only looking at state assessment data. But I think whether it's a true cohort, I mean, I think we obviously, all of our schools have experienced changes in the mobility rate, so we have, but not so great that this is.
But anyway, absolutely. The mobility percentages are not high enough to be able to disregard the dip for growth.
Okay, any other questions? I'm sorry, you're not done yet. You can roll in.
Similarly, math for our grade cohorts again, some things are, some positive spots as well, but concerns across the grade level, just this is a whole one to make sure that we continue to see where students grow.
No, I really, I can go back to the.
Sure.
So you do the diagonal, right? So, you know, you look at grade five, six, seven and eight.
Just, yeah, segmentation, almost just gonna be a rifle.
Why is it such a test?
It's the same, it's the same, we're the same teacher, it's the same.
Not necessarily like grade levels, but.
So remember the previous conversation that we had at seventeen, eighteen number, which we presented to more context. When seventeen, eighteen, grade eight, man, eighty percent, fifty percent of those kids were accelerated. So as we had conversations about, around what it means to be a student in District one sixty-one and saying no to acceleration or yes to different types of classes, we have to keep in mind that we're not capricious, that there's a lot of thought that was behind it. But as we have, I would call them acceleration arms race, you know, we're trying to get kids to geometry or algebra two before they get to high school, we're leaving some skills behind and it's having a detrimental effect. So we really have to focus on types of classes that we're providing, types of experiences we committed to, and all the eighth grade, and I think that's an excellent place to start. And then if we can ramp kids up further than that, perfect. But in order to do that, they have to demonstrate some proficiency and some skill.
So I know this state data is not at all for comparison purposes, but do you recall off the top of your head where we fell last year in comparison to the same?
Last year in overall?
In both math and, yeah, I don't know the benchmark, I don't remember where the benchmark is. Say, look. Because my guess is, I mean, it's probably not that much. The state.
Oh, no, the state, the state has not changed that one yet, but you're saying for this year.
Right, so we don't know it for this year, but if state average third grade math was, you know, thirty-five, I don't know, so I'm just wondering if we can remember.
We were close.
Jan's looking at.
So for example, third. All right, so for third grade, we're four percent eager to succeed, for example, and state of thirty.
What about that?
So. Then on that statement, where does the state allow the rank in terms of the potential? I'm sorry, talking to that. I'm just asking.
Looking at the context.
Oh, sure, absolutely. We suck. No, I think we do great things. I'll tell you, I don't think this data, they had a total conversations that had, I don't know what to expect, I don't know if people are playing coy, but there's some, there's some kind of consternation about where the IAR scores are shaping out to have weaknesses. So we have work to do, we have some work to do that we want to capture, and we have a few big bites that we can take. Couple of places we have to grind out three percentage points here and there, but we have a really good plan.
Although I will, I will say, not just for myself, that if the state's goal is that a third of the students in the state are meeting or exceeding and ready to go to high school, our goal is much higher. We need all of our students. Yeah, so to meet the state standards, we, the state needs to increase their own standards. But our goal should always be this thing, they should be higher, because we, we want all of our students to be prepared and ready.
Are there any particular questions that, you know, if we have an opportunity to take a look at the data?
Steve?
Just as a question, pre-K to twelve, Illinois is ranked seventh in nation for educational support.
There you go.
Six more.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, yes.
Well, if you want to go to the slides, we still have our presentations, man, there are a lot.
I do, anyone, I'm sorry, can you go back to the other slide? Does anybody else have any other questions or comments about the data or what we want to discuss?
You'll see all this again over in special education and interventions back on twenty-six.
Yeah, and so when we see the special education piece, like we have to have, in a similar way that we've been asking the same questions to gauge better understanding of the dip that happened, we have been asking the same question around special education. And the, the growth has either declined or it's been marginal at best and we just do not understand. I have zero, I can't articulate to any degree what is going on in our special ed program. So I'm really hoping that when we have a presentation in a couple of weeks, that we have a better understanding of what, what is it, and you know, what's, what's, we just help us understand what's going on. And then that helps us figure out how we can better support if it's a resource issue. You know, I truly believe that we need an audit because I just don't understand what the holes in the gas are. And I think that having an audit of our program and can better, it helps the district overall because it gives us a good place to start. And right now, I don't know if we have a good place to start because we've been asking the same questions year after year, after year, after year, and our numbers are really, really depressing. So we're looking forward to two weeks from now, but you know, we have great expectations on what we will learn. Any other questions about, from the summary that you wanted?
Yeah, so just in summary, we recognize the concerning chances of our student groups and just overall, we need to see more of our students. We've been discussing the school improvement plans, we did incorporate this data into our planning, and tried to reset our goals that were outpacing what the state's urgency targets moving forward are so that we can try to have that planned for it. And you will also see that special education is identified as achieving goals for our most students or collective.
And we'll talk about the SIPs, will we hear more about how we're trying to address these negative trends, who works for them?
Yes, so overall, you will hear big rocks around data analysis, particularly what will we do with the data and how will we guide our instruction and student collaboration and constructional impact as well.
One thing too, and I'm well aware this is a one shot in a person's life, and I would want to be judged by one day in my life. So anytime, I think this is for any, you know, administrator that's presenting that data, it would be helpful if there's ever, yes, this, but this, because then it helps us always have a full picture. So yeah, I know it says this about, about me and my school, or our school and our kids, but here's what I also.
And it's not.
Yeah, just because this is one day and I don't want to over emphasize it. It's important and it is what we're using in the management, but if at any time we could have, I guess, the directing students data, yes, but that would be, when they're, when they're, yeah. We have time, yeah, I mean, yeah, when we're able to do that.
One that, one there is best, one that exists, if there are pieces that we don't.
But actually, because even if we're looking at the special ed data, there is a but this, right? But we don't, we need to understand what the, what the but this is. And so understanding our students, our students' needs, like what the population really does, what we feel like, what the capacity needs are of our teachers, of our schools, all of that, that's the but, right? This is where we are, but here are where all of our holes are, and then this is how, I mean, so, so it's that piece that we don't get to here, we just, we've seen the data year after year and then that's all, this is it. So, so I think you mentioned always, I think presenters can always continue to potentialize.
And that is not for me, it's just, I wonder how we plan to address this student in much more light and white, not so abstract, not so much theory, not philosophically. What are we doing concrete and more? And I think that's another issue to be handled because it, it can't all happen at the same time. Physically and emotionally impossible, just the, the, especially if we talked about a little retrieval. But yes, but on special ed is that in most cases, they're two or three years behind you. So if we're measuring that with a bar that says in third grade, you're supposed to be here, there are really years behind, it's going to take them some time, right? And our opportunity is to measure our progress, pick your department, pick your school, through that strategic plan, effective, that we need to release, so that as a board, as a governing group, we know that yes, these are our indicators, this is how we're making progress, we're dragging this, we're fine with that, we're not fine with that. And I think the SIP plans that you're going to see tonight are actionable, this is absolutely what's happening. Any effective plan, it's, you know, it's like a lesson plan. All it is is some tentative form of agreement that a teacher makes between him or herself in the classroom, and then what really happens, and the road leads to the road, the class starts, is what you really want to key into. So as you're listening to these, from a blind side, I think what you want to focus on is what changes? What changes for adults? What changes for kids? And I'll tell you whether or not to stand a pretty good chance of being successful. And so SIP plans will focus on the big rocks and the gaps that we've identified that are missing. Strategic plan, we'll have action plans attached to that, so whatever. There's your finance action plan, your specialized department action plan, human resources, learning instruction. And then that's, to your point, David, that's where you say, okay, we're going to provide five days of training for all teachers on this, and this is going to go just to this deficit, and then.
I will say, and.
I know we're frustrated, especially.
We'll give you a little break. We do, however, need to make sure we are thinking about the timing of all of this. So as the SIPs will be living and breathing documents starting now, the strategic plan will not be signed, sealed and delivered until February. So there's a whole lot of work and opportunities between now and then. And so as a board, we need to know, because in all honesty, the strategic plan is not going to pick up December of next year, right? I mean, so this, so it's these SIPs that we will be living off of between now and the next school year. I mean, so we need to understand sort of what we should be looking at, what else we'd like to look at, and then how to measure this at the end of the day. So obviously, this work will feed into the strategic plan, and this is what we will be living off of for the next school year. So we can start with Blossom Hill. How are you doing?
Hi. Good evening. I have fellow teachers tonight with us, Helen Rizales, teaches pre-k at Blossom Hill, and Sky Wilson is our new student teacher at Blossom Hill. So they are part of the school improvement team and they're going to speak to pre-k with me, so. Okay, there you go. So when we met with Summer, the school improvement team, we looked at a lot of the data and we dug into it more in depth, more individualized by grade level, subject, subgroups, but this is our overall data and the overall trends. And so then we made the LA map goals with aligned to IAR for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. And so we looked at sixty-one percent of students to meet or exceed in reading and fifty-eight percent of students to meet or exceed in math. And now it's looking at our previous percentages and just wanting to definitely push it and keep expectations high and keep the rigor there.
Do you remember what your goal was for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen?
Yes, I think. Yes, I think they were bold. We had 55 for reading and I think 50 for math.
So 50 for reading.
50 for math. So you missed if I wanted reading a 1% point or above. So when we looked at it, I see four came and they helped us look at the percentages. We looked at 2024 and then we worked back how much percentage we would need to increase to be where we need to be at 2024. We're currently ahead of where the state says we should be, but we want to keep ahead. So then we doubled it. It was about 3.5% every year for us to stay on track. And so we doubled it to be progress and try to stay ahead. So maybe it's progress, but realistic for Blossom Hill and the way that we're working.
So, the kids who did not meet 14, is there a percent that's sort of near the bubble?
Yeah, so when we look at this as a team, and when I sit around my own too, you have exceeding, so you look at any. And so here always want you to look at, first of all, getting those mean students to exceed and working with your gifted teacher and your classroom for that. Then from me, there's approaching. And so you're looking at those approaching students. And you simply look at the exact child. You know, if we thought they should have met and they didn't, where does he not need to meet for that child? So where did that come from? So you definitely look at that level and see how you can push them, for sure.
Can you talk a little bit more, so when you look at each individual child, then what?
So that's kind of where you get your plan then. And you can look, you know, at individual children and see where it's a surprise or groups. And so if you look at a trend, and if you have, say, 15 fifth graders in the eighth gifted program, you expect them to exceed, right? So if that's not matching, then somewhere we start to look at the program, you can turn it off, and that's your dip. So specifically, if we go to the next slide, we looked at, for our plan, looking specifically at the IAR data and then maybe those targeted instructional groups. We think during intervention time, we could do better with the bubble kids and the high kids. We always have struggling students go into specialized teachers or reading specialists. Then the other students should also have part of an intervention. If they're those approaching kids, we should be doing specific things with them in a small group. When the gifted teacher takes the students that excel, and the reading specialist and the special education teachers take others, those bubble kids are left with the teachers. And at that time, they'll be really need to drill it out and do more. I have reports from SOE, don't they show you by mastery of skills and where as groups the students excel? Do they struggle in area? Do they excel in geometry? So we know what areas we need to hit better and teach better. And then specifically, we looked at, like for fourth grade, they need to look at how do they do last round IAR interplay on their teaching? But then also look at the third grade students coming in, the cohort they're getting, and look specifically at what those students need. So it's a lot of digging into it, but once you can figure that out, you can make your groups. And that's our plan, to make our groups during that math and reading intervention time and work on those bubble kids. Because I feel like sometimes those are the ones in the middle who can follow. Yes.
We go back. So when I'm looking at these numbers, I'm wondering, kind of going back to the whole cohort. So that 61% of mutual season reading, 58% mutual season math, is that kindergarten? Those would be same, same first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade?
So that's on average for third, fourth, and fifth grade for IAR. So that's our overall average.
Is there, all the directions, do they align, is it the same, or they rise and make them third, fifth?
Oh, our third grade towards the highest at Blossom Hill is on track. We scored within the 80, 81% and everything on math in third grade. So they, they were, they were actually the highest in this room. And then fourth grade was a little less, fifth grade was a little less. And for 2018, that was the highest.
Why?
Well, I've been looking at that, we talked about that as a team. We're wondering, maybe at fifth grade, should we consider doing some different group? Currently at Blossom Hill, we have energy group each across the board on all grade levels. But Weston had a lot of success, doing some ability grouping with them, doing some fostering. So we've looked at. We've talked about the motivation. Yeah. Motivation, motivation, so the third grade teachers that they still can be pretty excited. You can get a home, close to the sentence, and someone until fourth grade, start to take one off at fifth grade. Well, they're the grade across, they're here, you know, they're seniors. So they know that. Sometimes the motivation, so I think through capturing their parts, you know, part of the six, five, three, and they implement.
And for the people in the back, I have that same question for all of the world. So I'm not talking girl now, so when you got one, you do the same answer, like?
Yeah.
How's that happen?
It's not part of these questions we're asking, we have to do that. So that's why we're gonna try some things differently with intervention and see that meets. I mean, basically, if they digitalize instruction, we're like, if you get 61% of the students to meet or exceed in reading, we have to individualize it before we produce it. We need to know where they are mastery of the standards. And Mr. Olson, can you talk about the culture and climate?
Yeah, thanks. This is a little bit. So yeah, we're gonna talk about the culture and climate adds, as Mr. Olson brought up, that certainly kids feel like if they are completely sure that they are cared about, that they're willing to care about themselves, and want to care about what we're doing, our work, and what we need. And so one of the ideas that we, that we came up with, looked at our discussions, was participating in school-wide classroom visits, which means that we as teachers are going to go into other classrooms. We're gonna use our QR, our structural coaches, there's an order to do this. We do have lots of collaboration, there's some collaboration to do. However, rarely have we been able to see other people in practice. And so we're gonna learn about our own instruction by goodness. You know, certainly when I go and see other teachers, I know they're gonna be amazing, and they're doing that that maybe I could do. So we're gonna be, need to see our peers' actions. And then we're going to use our, our meetings that we've had before school. When we collaborate, we're gonna be able to use all of this information. We're gonna be able to agree, reflect, share, and most importantly, we're gonna learn about ourselves and our school.
Can I just ask you a quick question? What area of challenge specifically in regards to school culture and kind of where do you address it? How do you understand, or how do you, like, what was the thing you said, oh, we got that grouped, I can't?
It was, we saw five essentials. Under teacher collaboration, we were more organized, and we're trying to look at both core tests there. A lot of areas were most. And you can actually build down to a specific question, and we got a down, there's a question that says, have you observed other classrooms in your school one or more times, five or more times? And even as the building administrator, five or more times, I was like, wow. Like, they should all be seeing each other each five or more times. And so what we decided to do was put the structures in place to make that happen. Thank you.
So I really appreciate you guys joining us to do the survey.
Yeah.
I'm very much committed to students in large centers already and then being a part of the process. So I am interested to hear how you plan to use the data that you will collect from students.
Yeah.
I have questions from Mr. Olson.
How do you plan to use the data?
How, what do you want to do with this data on what?
So simply, I want to know what the kids think about this. I want to, I want to compare it to similar kids and all the questions, like, do they, do they like, when they consider they want, like, how do they learn best? That's what we're gonna start to figure out, what helps these kids learn. What are the trends and what are the individual things that help kids learn? Right, that's, that's what we gotta be into. All of it, all of the question that you asked here, all of them, like, why? And we don't know, we don't invest enough for, that's what we're trying to reach.
And as, if they say, Mr. Olson is my favorite teacher, why? What did you do that made you excited to come to school, engaged, wanting to do well on assessments? Proud of yourself, you know?
So what grade are you, will all students participate in?
Probably third, fourth, fifth for the survey. See, if it goes well, maybe we will.
Yeah, I would discount a little K group too now. I mean, they are, right, very honest, right, Ms. Pupacero? Brutally honest, those kindergarten. But I think giving them the opportunity to exercise their voice and give you their opinion will be huge. Because if you ask my six-year-old, you know, why he would prefer to lay on the floor, crisscross applesauce is extremely uncomfortable. But no one ever is. So don't discount the voices of our 105, 67, 77, that they, they can help inform.
And then Mrs. Sals is gonna talk a little bit about our improvement gap.
So for our special education, we noticed that we had tremendous gains. So we're not quite what we want to be. So we're gonna really focus on that through implementation of our bridges programs, the interventions with FIDE, FIDE subgroup. And then we also noticed that attendance is a real issue. So we're going to do some interventions plans as needed for that. And I'll go back to the capturing cards today, there was a lot of great ideas that people implemented right away. We talked about phone calls, home gate, not just from Mrs. Marty, but you know, from the teachers. That are, okay, just reaching out, like you said, you know, just going out of your comfort zone a little bit, you know? Sometimes I think, you know, we get caught up in, well, is attendance really my job as a teacher? Or that's the opposite, you know? And letting them know that this child was absent for seven days in a row. You know, you should probably bring that up sooner so that we can get, but see what's going on, you know? And then have Mrs. Marty or a social worker or somebody to judge if there's something, you know, going on there. Individual check-ins, we did this with a student last year, so kind of like a trial run, and it worked really well. She's very motivated. This is an unfortunate situation where she gotta get herself up, get herself to school. She has siblings, but if they left for her, she was at home, well, what's gonna motivate her to get up and go? She just walks down the street, you know? So it did work with her. So again, like Mrs. Marty said, more individualizes to really reach who needs to reach and make the parents feel comfortable to go out there.
So the attendance is actually, and I'm just making statements, so ask me one question. Attendance is actually tardiness and acetia?
Yeah, I would say yes, yeah.
Is it, one is a bigger factor than the other, and, or you gotta kind of address each of them half?
Both, but it's usually pretty consistent, like, most of the same students who are absent a lot also experience tardies. So it kind of goes hand in hand. So these plans, like, for example, that student, it was bold for her. It was getting used long time for the 8:15 check-in with her specific teacher, who she knew was gonna be waiting for. And then she didn't make it, you know, she wanted to see her teacher to check in, and then also just being there in general. I just wanna thank the teachers at Blossom Hill. They are an excellent team, and the parents are incredibly supportive. I've given more tours since Brent, new families moving into the community, families coming from private schools, and families coming from private schools. And that's why our enrollment numbers are high. And that's because the parents share with their friends and encourage their neighbors to try public school. And so, and that's due to the teachers being absolutely excellent.
That's for our, these great teachers, while our wires are straight up.
Are you sure that only John knows this art?
Well, yeah, I don't think that art is, did you say, did you hear?
Yeah. Thank you. I, I will say, overall, I like, I think for those of us who have seen many school improvement plans, the format of this is much easier to read. I appreciate it being broken out by adult and student practice because so many times we, we miss talking about both the challenges and opportunities from a student and adult perspective. So I appreciate, I appreciate the new format, whoever it is that is responsible. Who's next?
Hello. Good evening, for education, we have a cover up here. All right, thank you for laying your, and through the plan. First, to go over some of our data, we had some really good results. When we're looking at our increase in reading proficiency focusing this on the IAR, increased 1% from previous year. In math, we were able to go roughly about 10%, which is 20% over the last two years. So something that we're really proud to maintain that for next year. Looking at our cohorts, we can see the pretty significant growth between the cohorts as they've gone. Looking at our fifth grade, number 37, 40 to 57 in math. So we definitely see that, that looking forward. We're really proud of that. For next year, for next year, for our ELA goal, we are at 53.2. This year, we want to get it up to 60.2. Same as Ms. Marty said, we took what we were supporting with the state one in the city in 2032, had a backtrack, which got us about 3.5%, and then we doubled back to be on track. The state, this year said for ELA, they wanted us at 46.38, and we're at 47.27. So we're ahead of the game right now in the same in math. We wanted us at 42%, and we were at just 46.7%. So we're moving in the right steps, we actually go on from there. So some of the ways that we're going to do that is in analyzing math. We hear the same adult practices and student practices, almost identical for both subjects. Really working on those fine-tanned segments, so students know exactly what they're learning and what their outcomes want to be. Things got away from them a little bit, and want to make sure we really get back into that system so they know what they're supposed to be learning. And then plus, we're going to base on our assessment data. The evidence statement analysis, which comes from the IAR, this morning we talked a little bit about, it gives us really great information of exactly where the students are selling it in this standard, and we're needing a little bit more work. And one of the things that we did this year, which contributed to our great result, our growth, was that we really took that data, took our resources, jumped them up, and created new groups that would hopefully suggest that we know those standards. So, you know, some students that maybe have never been in a group together, we put them in a group and said, now we're gonna work on this standard, you know, specific. Then it didn't work really well. The teachers were amazing, Ms. Matthew, Brent, Freebo, so I'm a lot of time myself, really looking at the data and figuring out how we're gonna get those groups in fact, really getting them. So we plan on doing that again, again this year. I'm gonna jump to achievement gap. For our achievement gap, we're obviously focused on the special education group. And we're noticing that in our special education group, we're gonna be utilizing our business intervention as much as we possibly can. So that is something that's done through our PLCs and our team meetings, and everything that we're gonna look into and really dive deep into our needs and the resources that we have, to make sure to get, get the growth we want to see. The other thing that we have is goal setting. And that is, some teachers are doing it, some are not doing it, it just kind of depends on, it wasn't a uniform thing, because the entire building was going. And we really want to use our data folders this year to create goals that the students understand that they're analyzing their own data to have that connection. Because I think, you know, that's one of the biggest things, that if the students don't have that connection to that data, and that assessment, and know what they're doing, like you were saying too, that it becomes arbitrary. But the minute that they actually look at it right down, and you just want to go and do it, it becomes so personalized. Yeah, and exactly, it's the ownership of it. So using our data folder, using our PLCs, using the evidence, bringing all the tools that we have to really help them create goals, and you know, we can make sure that they reach the goal for them. So that's sort of that. The culture and climate, very similar to the, you know, we're really, we're really trying to look at what we're working at and have it be uniform, and have all the schools work them together. And also for us too, looking at our pride essentials, that's what we support the laws too as a teacher collaboration. We have over half of our staff said that they've never been in another classroom. That's not acceptable, and how are we gonna get out there and do that? So the team is working, you know, coming up with ways that we can get into each other's classes, gift giving to each other, celebrate, you know, the amazing things we're doing, and take what they're doing and put them in our opportunities. Also, to the student service, we are gonna focus more paper pencil, kind of call it a little back on like the upper grades, like four or five, and do more like poker presentations with the little ones. See if they're, do it there, from there.
Can you go back to the previous slide?
Yeah.
So again, same question I had for a possible, so, did you see a trend where the third graders' scores were higher than fourth graders were lower, and fifth graders were lower? Did you see that?
We did. Our fifth grade was, fourth grade was higher, our fifth grade, our fifth grade. Our fifth grade was very, our fourth grade was very high. But in, we can't be denouncing it for us.
And so regarding the attendance, absenteeism, now I recognize there was a pie contest.
Yes.
That's going to motivate the students at the end of the year.
Is it?
Are you going to institute that killing of the year, end of the year?
So very interesting you can have. We actually originally had one of our culture high goals as attendance. The pie and the face contest took us a lot longer than we wanted it to take. I mean, it took a lot of like, you got to get here, you got to get in here. I mean, you know, it was a fun day, and I was very sleepy by the end, but it took, it took, it took a lot longer than we thought. So we want to focus on that, and with the help of our teachers, we have come up with some amazing strategies. We've been out in attendance team in our buildings that has a list of tasks that they have to do. So we are tackling that, we will have things, yes, it's just a part of our, it's one of the behind the scenes, but unofficially on paper.
Any questions?
Two, yeah. The idea behind students being able to sort of monitor their own data. Where are your, so I agree, you made a comment, I think, about, you know, ownership. But there's also this ability for students to become extremely overwhelmed and over consumed with.
Absolutely.
Data.
Absolutely.
So I don't know how you plan on managing that. I mean, and every kid is different, obviously, right? I had a kid who in the moment got off the bus, I could tell what he thought of this test. He had to open his mouth, right? And he, I mean, so each kid will manage that differently, but I am curious to hear sort of your philosophy around how we will help students sort of navigate this point in time.
Absolutely. So we, they have our data folders, we're kind of recording it, there's fours on, on its own, kind of see the timeline. We want to take it a little bit deeper, but for this assessment, they have it where we can, in our ELA series two, where we can actually go through and look at this problem, look at this question, how do you do our, kind of, you know, thing? That's something about how would you start off real slow, doing maybe every other assessment, understanding data where you're in elementary school, I mean, it's, it's going to be very overwhelming. So we can be very, very slow, but really setting and looking at that data where they're at, trying to pick a spot to make a goal for the, for the next unit. Is this something that's going to run absolutely perfect? Are you doing it? Probably not, because I'd love for the two, but we're listed that there's going to be ups and downs. And I think our biggest thing is that as a staff, we come together and say, okay, we're going to try this, this unit, everyone can try it, we're going to come back, gather our feedback, how did the students do? What do we see as some of the struggles, and how can we address it and take it as best we can with it?
Will parents be able to see their folder?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And that's something else, like for the, for children, I talked about earlier, parents having to maintain data. Like we all meet for our last year during parent teachers, we printed out, because each student's going to continue those that with each parent, and went over, here's your child's app, here's other skills that they're going to learn. This is where we want them to, to get to near the end. It was a big task, the teachers have been nominal in getting the reports ready, and usually they have these personal connections. And I then had follow-ups with parents, I said, okay, that was too quick, go over again. So just trying to get out as much awareness as possible.
That would be good, yeah. I'm just going over the results. Like do all schools do that? I would, yeah.
Resultable.
But they're, they're tracking, whatever you're tracking, you're, you're, the IR, their pressure, their.
Depending on the older generation.
You mean? Your parents? Well, like they went through, I have parents who come from place that down in.
No, that doesn't happen. I think it would be fantastic if I turned, right, and I come and work with involved. I already have not experienced. And then my last question, I'm sorry, there was some more?
There is my role report, let's see it on the screen.
The other question is that I noticed that both your achievement gap goal, both Heather Pill and Foscar Hills sustain, which is 7% increase, is that just a sheer coincidence? Like how did you come up with what the goal for this increase?
Sheer, it was basically, it's kind of a sheer coincidence kind of a thing. You kind of were looking at it, you go through them, and just kind of like analyze where we're at. Is that okay, let's, let's go, let's go through it, kind of a thing. So was it a huge scientific method to that one? No, but it appeared the other ones that we did here, our ELA goal, it appeared our math was 7%.
And you showed my topic, you said that states, right, 315 years doubled, and so they both did the same double.
Try to be aggressive.
Both of those doubled.
Yes, it is definitely aggressive, so thank you, we appreciate that. We would love to hear anything more detailed later on specifics on how, because they are impressive goals. Right, and so more detail on how we will be working with the action plan, and how we can support.
I think the challenge of our conversation about all these spoken plans at this level will be our, and thank you guys.
Thank you, thank you.
It's because there are compliments of, yeah, we had the specials for the last three years. Because somehow we can find another 90 minutes of reading instruction per day. It's going to resonate with all of some people, it's going to not resonate well with others. But we know that for every year that you're behind, it's 60 to 90 minutes of additional instruction per day. Otherwise, how long are we going to sit on it? Right, you can't tell that we haven't been trying to get to 100% proficiency in the last thousand years, right? And again, that's, that's a little bit of a plan that comes in our Bible, because at some point we have to make those commitments. And we have to go to fall back to, yes, we have decided that being able to read is 10 times more important than being able to play an instrument.
Well.
And so in order to do that, we'll have to make structural changes at the elementary level for those who want. And if we're, we'll, but then we'll decide, then we'll know, we'll never generate 10%. Why, because we've decided that we're going to make these structural decisions.
I would just, I would try to shape that by saying that I don't think that, you know, music, learning instrument, and creating instruction are mutually exclusive. In fact, I'd use, as a greeting feature, I'd use music as a way of really helping kids to learn, you know? So I mean, I think from my perspective, it's, it's more of how do we use the specials to multiply what's happening in the academic process? You know, certainly, you know, I've talked about reading and several other things. You know, I think that one of the issues is, this ties into, I think we're shifting away from a silo, teacher silo culture to a teacher collaborative culture. And part of that is, you know, changes in person, you know, administrative efforts that we see, so, you know, moving things in a positive direction. But I, I don't think that, I think the conversation is how, how music, how.
Let me sort of adapt this for you.
I know, I know, chief.
No, no, this is, this is kind of, we're group students losing about 25 minutes of school per day. Leaving school because of a minor commitment, right? Or, and that was during intervention class, whatever. And so again, when you, when you start to make those decisions, you're choosing, you're making choices on the type of productivity and outcomes that you're looking for. So my point is to be very purposeful about how we structure, by our, some of the structured interventions.
Sure.
All those different things, so that we can educate the whole child effectively, but also be very clear about one delivery. We are clear about how we want kids to walk out of a burger, that we're going to use that as a way.
Well, you know, the conversation about day, moment, time, all of that, I've listened to that as a challenge. And I would hope to hear is that we find balance. Now, if you could just tell me, it is impossible to find that balance, then I'll just answer. But I don't think anything is impossible. And so I just wanted to say that I understand where she was going, with the fact that we still need to balance that out. I don't think you disagree with that. I know we're discussing ELA and math, which is definitely the measure, but we do need to find some way to make all possible, that's a challenge.
Work in conjunction.
Again, I think that's why I want to make some tough decisions, because it doesn't work that way.
No, it'll be a interesting conversation.
Oh, absolutely.
Well, I think as part of the conversation, and this question doesn't have to be answered at this moment, but where my lack of understanding is, is that I, I do not believe that there has never been a time where we've had balance, right? I do not believe that there has not been a time where we have not been able to have interventions and specials in kids excelling and doing. So I'm not understanding where the breakdown, like what has changed so much in the past few years where our scores have dipped to the levels that they have, and now we are saying we cannot be balanced? Like I'm not understanding what, what the difference is and what's happened over the past however many years. And I would, you know, also rely on teachers to help fill in some of that gap, especially those who've been here for a very long time. But that is what I, because it's, it's not like this just happened overnight, right? Like what happened? When did we really started to see these trends going south? And does that coincide with other major changes that happened within the district in terms of our scheduling? Like that is what I'm understanding. So, you know, so when we have this, when we start having these conversations, like I think helping us understand all of the trends that have occurred over the past, you know, five, seven years, so that we understand, you know, how it really is a scheduling issue now. It was not a scheduling issue five years ago.
I would say that it wasn't an issue five years ago.
So we just need to understand that, because, right, that's, that's what I'm saying. So if it was a scheduling issue five years ago, did schedules change drastically six years ago? Like this is what we just don't understand. And I think certainly for those members who have not been in the district or on the board, and who don't have, you know, any context for this, like we need to understand how, how is it now a scheduling issue? So we can, we can hold off on that conversation, because I think it's, it's part of the larger conversation. So I don't want to digress anymore from these, these great tips, but, but I think we need to understand why one is a scheduling issue.
Well, that's, to your point, it's a, it's a great discussion, but another, yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, they agree. So who's up next? Stars, Serena Hens.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank Marie Moss and Anna Moore, who've been carrying on their busy lives coming, like, moving, so to speak. It was a really enjoyable process to approach this planning as a comparative agreement among staff, administration and such, so it's a brought to our share for me. We're starting with that, we're going to look backwards at, so we have these results, 17, 18, including 15, 16, both ELA and math were at 39%. This year, our reading scores were stagnant, again, 39%, with vaccines, all increased 42%. But next year, we have set a goal for 51% of the kids reading or exceeding in reading, 58% of the kids reading or exceeding in math. And then looking at the five essential survey, we saw some really concerning things, just looking at the math hierarchy of kids' needs, that safety came up, and that really concerned us. And so we decided to address teacher safety performance and the student safety rating first, and then additionally, trying to get our parents more involved in our community, and so we set that as a goal also. We have attendance falling in line with all of those things also. So what that looks like for us is, we're going to work all together to create a cover writing strategy, methodology, strategy keys across all classrooms, targeted small group instruction for the kids. We have a target group of kids at each grade level we're going to be looking at and working with. Those kids are going to also receive additional targeted group instruction with some teachers, and then additional training support to those students also. In math, we're going to have some differentiation as well in places. Again, some targeted small group instruction, various MIT fund, and things like that. We're going to be in data folders, we have students self-reflection, start tracking their data, their goals in there. And then for the climate culture goals, we're going to try to take the staff at grade 3 through 5 in the school-led conferences, and when we forget his job, we did that, and we saw our parents, we saw our parent teacher conferences go from about 60% to, first year we did enough, so our parents went to conferences. It removed a lot of barriers, it removed the, the stress for some parents, especially for bilingual parents, and students that translate the entire coverage for them. And students, like, even use of their performance and things like that. Teachers kind of working on the women, they're there to support the conversation and enablement, but kids really drive the process. And then additionally, we have expectations across all areas of the building, having expectations of restroom, hallways, and whatnot, have kids really know those and understand those, that, those two functions. That really leads to a different, more different written today, that's ours.
So will all love the conferences, do all grade levels of these students live?
Three to five.
Three to five, but all?
I'd say this year, I'd say all for the second grade, and see if they're, you know, if anybody wants to be a teacher. But I'd really three to five.
So, but all students in three to five?
So just to clarify, so in this way, students will be kind of trained to, or given like a workshop in Cal, you talked to your parents about, I think this is really.
The whole script and everything.
It just gives an open, opens a gateway for presentation.
Yeah, and then we're going to attend to the length, and it's really, it really teaches them additionally, what they needed to do to evaluate their own work, and what was a good piece of, of work that they wanted to share. It wasn't always just, I got a mail, it was, sometimes I got maybe a seal, like, look at the process that I went through for this. Writing key, so they didn't end it the right way, but my teacher and I worked together to get me to this, to a seat, whatever that was, but it focuses on the process, not just the, the piece of the end.
So can you come back after the first parent teacher conference? Because I'd love to hear how it goes, but I'm particularly interested in whether or not it does increase participation from parents.
Absolutely. I'm hopeful, because I really did, it really did, I really saw a change in even the vibe of the building during those days. It used to just be parents walking back quickly, or asking what room they walked off. You saw kids skipping down the hallway, and trying to have a look there at the same time. So it kind of made the schoolhouse a much happier place, a little bit less distance, especially for those of your parents that I have.
All right, so you know what questions I'm going to do, right?
Go for it.
Well, answer them, you want to hear?
Yes.
Can you go back to the slide?
Yep.
How did your third, fourth, and fifth grade do with ELA, math? Do you see it decline, do you see it, you know, consistent, do you see it increase?
I saw a decrease, it's your annual saw a decrease.
How much?
Average 46% in ELA for third grade, that's me, that exceeds to a 36% in fourth grade, to a 34% in fifth grade. And in math, it was a 49% third grade, fourth grade was a 47%, and the third was a 30%.
And so some of the things you talked about just, you will, will address that?
Yes. We select the students that, that are in the band that have just, just right the low meeting, or just right the next performance level, and those are the kids that are going to get those targeted extra reinforcements. So we can hopefully list them off a band in addition to their wonderful classroom instruction with everybody that we see.
And to show the question, so Fosmore and Heather are up near seven percent. So where are you?
We, for me, I feel like there's a greater sense of urgency because thirty-nine percent isn't acceptable. So, we looked at it and it really wasn't, luckily, the numbers are small, so it's not like we're trying to target twenty children. We could target eleven and twelve and do it, we could wow, and it'll change it to that.
And my last question, what are you going to address the issue of attendance?
We're going to have the attendance committee. We're going to start announcing every day what the attendance rate is, the target rate is. We're going to hand share, I mean, Ms. Collins shared with us the grade board that she has a sure rate. We're going to start putting in the data rate and target rate on there every day so the parents are seeing as they're coming up what the attendance has been for the day before. And really just articles, right? We hope this helps. We have going knocking on doors for those families in rooms. We can just try our best. And we'll, Remandy, you have a little room, you guys have to. Any other questions?
So, I think the student-led, the nodal idea, it opens up so, you know, hope. I really, really hope it works out for you. Because it opens up so much for the kids. And when they have that collaboration and just it gives them the speaking abilities and the presentation skill sets, it gives them so much. For something so small, they gain so much work and helps the parents.
I don't know, does it change the dynamic of the relationship?
It really does.
It helps to score.
Yes, because they all function together. So I think that is a wonderful, very, very question.
There are those students, of course, that teachers will be completely with to have some maybe more difficult conversations. And I always advise my teachers to schedule those first or last. And then they can meet with those and the students who go see their presentations and maybe have the outside story and then they help the parent. But so, yes, they still afford that opportunity because sometimes there's tough conversations that need to be done.
Right, yeah.
In fact, I had, I started off with the fifth grade, I had second through fifth grade building and the third through fifth grade teachers, and the second grade teachers special, etc. So, who wants to be there?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Well, good evening. We're glad you came in. Thank Judy for this, for coming to talk to our building leadership team. And I just have to say, our building leadership team worked in June and July and they were so patient. Which all my questions I got is I could dig through the data of Western Avenue and understand it, and find out where they were at. And the team was just so supportive in helping me understand where we were. So it was a great time to meet with us and work. So we ran over and finished highlighting things. Overall, in ELA at Western, we saw a twelve percent growth. So we went from forty-five percent the year prior to fifty-eight percent this year. And we had sixty-four percent of our kids at the fifth grade level that are exceeded, that are heading to Parker. So, our third graders had the overall highest. It dropped a bit in fourth, but then fifth went back up. So we kind of have a topic on purpose against your question there. What we would kind of have to see overall in all of them is that I R C needs part as well. We had a good chunk of the needs, but then right down in I R C, it was a little bit smaller looking at some of that acceleration population. For math, we also showed growth there. We went from forty-five percent the year before to eighty percent this year. And this is where our third graders had the highest comp that math exceeded. Sixty-five percent of every level math exceeded in the I R C area. When we looked at our student group, we really thought that thirty-two point three percent of our students identified with I E Ps in the math portion of I R, that were exceeded. However, on the ELA portion, that's where we were sitting at twelve point five percent. And that's going to be the part of our group that we perfect is going to be the ELA portion for our students with I E Ps there, that student group that we're going to look at. We did kind of look and wanted to write down, how close were they? Who was like right there, maybe it's to that next level? So each group in that I R, there's different point range, you need to get to the next level. So we kind of looked at, okay, who needed to be five points? And who needed more like ten points to get there? So we broke that down. About fifty percent of our students with I E Ps in grades three, four, and five were between five and ten points away. We wrote our goal there a little differently than other schools. For that group, we are looking at having twenty-six percent of them grow to the next level. So we're going to be kind of shorting that separately to see, did they make that growth? And then when we went and looked at climate and culture, we did have a forty-seven point increase on our student discussion. So it was a very large increase from the year before. However, we chose to look at the area very much similar to our other elementary schools, like the teacher-to-teacher collaboration. We were only at average implementation. And again, like you kind of heard, people getting out of their classroom to teach. And some of your best P D is right next door, but you don't have a role to add. And then the other area that came up was teacher safety. And then when we broke that down with the student part, we're kind of looking at really refreshing our P D I S to get that with students and helping them to stay that tall. So it was kind of just some of our data highlights there. So now, how are we going to do those things? We had just a couple of things in our, so then there's, of course, other things that are going to go on behind the scenes that we didn't just capture. But we wanted to really make targeted items that we can all have at a level there. So, when we're looking at ELA, we really noticed we kind of also looked at her, so what seems to be with ELA? We're really looking for that analysis that comes out from I R that the other schools touched on too, because I mean, it's every single question. Where did you score according to state, the district, and around the school? When we kind of looked at our N W E data, the vocabulary was where we were at. So we're going to be using one of the strategies from the FALCO classroom, which is called Wordwork, Understanding Vocabularys Code. And it can be used not just in the gym setting, but across specials, everywhere. Really having breakdown and analyzing words that are used. And I worked with this strategy before and I've seen our littlest finger there, it goes on the word sorting words, saying, I moved these words together because they're all things that can go in the water. And they just start to have these conversations where they're really talking about words. It's a very effective strategy. One of the other things too is when we really analyze the I R data in ELA, there is a huge writing component to that reading portion. And they are writing almost in whole syllabus responses. So it's not just separately the passage or the font. We're including responses to that. So we're really going to be working on everything that is we write on it. And we're going to start, of course, with modeling it because, you know, some of our littlest friends need some of that modeling. And then all the way up to we've been talking with our fifth grade team. They're like, well, before we just kind of, there's a reading, what's response to it? It's more, we're handling it, but we need to model it. And so they were writing that, and we were like, all right, yeah, we're going to kind of dredge and release that. Our report is, we get it out, we write all of these models in there, which they need a visual of this age. So they know how we get feedback, what's expected of them. So we're working on that for ELA. When we get into math, one of the biggest things, of course, with this shift, I think you see, kind of, shall we, sort of like, when we see that change from five years ago, is you have to be able to apply and analyze problems. And before, it was when the other state tests that were out, and what is it? And so really, we're working on problems of the week. What is those, what are those critical thinking skills that kids need? And we're going to develop a rating appropriate for kids so that kids understand, like, these are the response. How do I talk to my peer about their next big thing? We disagree because here's what I saw in that problem. So we're going to work on problems of the week. And then also, we really want to have some targeted math interventions. And we want to utilize programs of contact, personal, and federal to really give those kids engaging activities to work on when they're not right with their teachers in those areas. When we look at our student group, for our students with I E Ps, again, we want to look at the ELA portion there. For those students, we're going to use a strategy covering for me, which is also through FALCO classroom. It can be applied on all of our adults, from kindergarten all the way to fifth grade. Surely help them break their vocabulary theories. And that's what we're going to be working on. It's our teachers, our I E P students set as well. We're also going to have those sessions together. And we have seen that, is that instructional strategy working for you? And so one of the things we talked about was really going to have those G L C meetings to break down all our action items and say, okay, how did your formative assessment turn out? How are the kids doing there? How from your class did, well, here, yeah, I shall do this. What can we do together? So we're going to be really believing in the formative data to help us know, are these action items working? Or are we going to just be done? So that's going to be a process over the next year. And then when we look at culture, climate, and like a priority, our classroom groups are super important. So we're going to make sure we make our priority in our days that we schedule how, when you can go and see others. And then it's not just one person going to see someone, but our instructional coach will then do any kind of true talk about it. So it's one thing to go visit a classroom. If you don't take private classes, or not share those ideas, then maybe you just walked in and walked out and something else came onto your plate. So really having others to talk about what we saw in the classroom, and other things for each other. And then also, we talked about, our building with very common, we have asked me, but we obviously have a couple of kids that they just aren't, they're still sitting out. So really working on targeted answers on why, why are you buying into what we're doing and creating? And we capture kids' art, student, and our social contracts, everything that learning. We're really taking it at that. Maybe we have a little differently than the whole school. So why isn't it working and what can we do to help you back there? So those are kind of some of the highlights of our big overall all-ins. And of course, there's other things that are important that we're going to talk about. But we're really excited. The team was very on board. And so we're going to, and some of the things that we put in, providing P D for the staff, getting out there, making sure they, they need questions, support, instructional coaches are going to be digging into some of these items, so we should be definitely involved in that.
So, you answered the question on ELA. Did you answer the question on math?
Math, I did it also. It was this day. So the, the third graders were the highest, they had sixty-five point three that were exceeded. Then we dropped for fourth grade at forty-six point four. It went up just a little with math for forty-seven point three. So actually, our third was the highest, but then we went down.
And you kind of packed it up, didn't you? Second question is to, it's a question about attendance. So, do you have a plan to organize attendance?
So, in coming in, I haven't yet worked with our group on what we're going to do for attendance yet. One of the things I've consistently done on attendance is really go over those each month. Where are our kids at? Who are those kids meeting with our building social worker, our school members also? And kind of sit there and say, okay, who do we need to maybe make a call? Put a plan in action for that. And that's a process I use in the past to deal with attendance. We did though, it was really nice that Mrs. Holland brought her sign to class. She got the night, and my secretaries were like, I guess, no, of course, you know, but let's make sure we follow through on it. So if one of our signs says, you know, please come and check your sign in your childhood, and you don't do any, and you just have to sign it there, and I'm like, oh, you didn't check your student ID? And you don't know why they're not here. You know, it's actually helped me with that actually.
My last question. I see that you were talking about the thought of classroom, and I'm glad you had a little ask about it. Ready Gen, the thought of classroom and the Ready Gen, they kind of know how to.
So, FALCO classroom is really this good instructional strategy. So that's kind of your instructional framework. And then Ready Gen also gives some of those tools, add more targeted areas that they come into. So, thought of classroom gives you your overarching framework. How do you get this implemented? What are those teaching strategies to you? So then Ready Gen will give more targeted approach to that.
Would you say that there is, I guess maybe this is a, this is a trivia, but it's a good question. Would you say that, maybe rephrase. Would you say that there is a conscious effort to really infuse academic vocabulary at each grade level? And you talked about, you know, kids really monitoring their writing along the way and having those conversations. So is this, would you say that you're really infusing that with academic vocabulary that builds to, from K through five?
And that's what we're going to be using for this. So we'll be using this strategy, but what we've noticed too is kids need to be exposed to a lot of different words and a lot of different terms. And what N W E does is it does a really nice breakdown of, here are the terms utilized, N W E is something. While we might ask kids to write a paragraph, N W E might write a lesson, write an essay. So right there, the student doesn't know, even though they are fully capable of responding to that question. So we're also going to be going in and looking at, what are those different terms? How do we understand, you know, maybe we didn't teach that word, but have we given them enough tools that they can figure out, oh, an essay paragraph from the context that I'm reading? That makes sense. And at each grade level, there is specific words that are appropriate for those students to get exposed to.
And would you say that this is building specific, or is this really more of a collaborative thing happening with all of the buildings? I think it sounds terrific. I mean, I love it.
I mean, I think it's going to be off work, I don't think it's super really connected to kids. I did just see for them, but. I was at a camp, but I did, but I mean, I think it's just overall different strategies. And N W E did dive into the ethical vocabulary, for sure.
I will say, that's when we have really dug into that, exposed kids to more vocabulary. We did see score go up.
So this is a training, so does the district next year, change that in the previous system?
I was working, I'm working on that one.
Fantastic.
So, the student collaboration piece with peer buddies, with all students, peer nations?
So we're going to have all students engagement, because we thought, what better way to get to teachers helping classes also than to partner up with a peer buddy? So what our E L T team will be doing is typically it's more like, you know, like we're in, you know, like, third with K, fourth with F, fifth with S. And then what they will do is that once a month, they'll be a time that they go in and work on a peer question together. And not so much just reading buddies, because in the past, you know, they've had, oh, where are your buddies are coming in? But really seeing kids being one, we're going to research together, what does that look like? Well, if you care, a fifth grader, you know, with one of your second grade students, just think how much more that's one of those second graders can get. And some of our fifth graders who maybe don't feel, have shown in some of their skills, now they're empowered to help that second grade buddy. And so, we want them actually collaborating on stuff type of little project that they're going to work on. And we're starting with just once a month, let's see where this goes. And our building leadership team will kind of address, see how we're looking at, if everybody's prepared to lead to me. But really, that goal is to empower the students to be having the conversations to do the work together. I mean, I see kindergarteners, as long as we use, I would have some third grade students come and work with them. And maybe they couldn't exactly read a couple of the video words on PowerGO or figure out a format something. And then they worked with that third grade buddy, they helped, they worked together, and they both presented that piece. And then we felt proud of those two guys, we got us. We are paying everybody that we're supposed to pay.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Well, I would certainly not waste. For a secondary, I thought we skipped Parker. That would have been probably better. So, we are very excited to get things restarted and rebooted at Parker this school year. We just had our first institute day with the Parker staff, the team, Steve Cox and Mrs. Muske. Also, Miss Dudley, our head place manager, has done a phenomenal job this time, digging into what issues are at Parker. We are really focused on stripping things back, resetting expectations. Not just for students, but for adults. What do we want to see in our hallways? What do we want to see in classrooms? How do we want students to feel so that students' experiences are better? So, just looking at our data, similarly, I'll be set. But we believe our aggressive goals. We need to push the needle hard at Parker. We need to not hide it, you know, continue to make improvements. Certainly, in my eyes, staying the same at Parker. If you look at our math scores this year, staying the same is the same as going backwards at this point. We have to really move forward. So we're looking at moving from thirty-two percent in ELA to forty-two percent for this school year. So ten percent points for each. We were at twenty percent of students meeting or seating in math. We're looking at thirty percent in math for this year. Certainly, goals that we feel like are aggressive, but we don't feel like there is any reason why we cannot make that much progress at Parker. We have a long. We have incredible, well, resources, we have incredible teachers. What we need is consistency and collective effort and focus. So again, really trying to strengthen things back. A lot of things that are great at Parker, but we want to be able to make the things that are working, and if it's not working, get rid of it, move on, and keep it simple, but go deep in things. So PBIS for culture and climate is going to be a major lift for us. Mrs. Pop and Mrs. Muske did a great job today. This is Sunday as well. This is our reboot day with the staff. We're introducing the staff to PBIS. Really doing its right, doing its fidelity. Really grateful to the board for giving us additional seconds for PBIS coordinators to be, have some great impact at our school. Modeling and teaching expectations and celebrating student success. Our students are wonderful. Our students do a great job every day. We want to fill up those positive experiences and make a deal out of it. Versus, you know, hearing about the negative things at Parker. There are negative things. There are ten great things happening for our students every day. And then instruction. So first and foremost, my role as a leader at Parker, and I don't know if in the past this has been explicitly stated to the staff and students at Parker, my role and my team's role is to be instructional leaders. But that means that we're in classrooms, we are giving feedback, we are coaching through your teachers as an expectation. So pushing around data, pushing around improving your practice, clarifying what we want to see. We want to see high levels of engagement from students. It's unacceptable for any student to be checked out. How do we help them check that in? It's unacceptable for classrooms to not have a level of engagement that you do to our students. We need to say that. We need to monitor it. We need to make it okay for people to be vulnerable enough to improve in that area. That's what we're starting to chip away at over the next two days. And then also data reflection and reteaching. So we talked a lot about data earlier. We have a lot of data. We're not doing a consistently collective, consistent job around taking that data and enjoying something about it. So again, having some set protocols. If students didn't get it, we didn't teach it. Didn't teach it effectively enough. We need to reteach, we need to regroup, we need to try again. That's where it seems, students report and says, well, they didn't get it. So I need to move on. No, don't move on. Move on is a better way. And so again, just resetting those expectations and being consistent about it. And then for our achievement gap, we also selected special education as our achievement gap area of focus, similar to the elementary schools. The difference with Parker is that we have a co-teaching model at Parker for, to service our special education students. Most of our special education students are serviced through our co-teaching model, which means we have two teachers in classrooms. So putting it very simply, we should be seeing much more gains from those classrooms where there are two adults providing instruction. So our teachers are working really hard, they're putting the effort in. They're consistent, and we're not seeing the results that we want for those students. So we really targeted, there are lots of effective strategies around co-teaching. We selected two strategies for Parker that we wanted to see that are the most students centered, and they're parallel teaching and station teaching. And so that's opportunities for all the classrooms that are in a co-teaching setting to focus on stronger construction, focus on meeting student needs as much as possible. Versus other co-teaching structures which are effective, but they're hard to monitor and they're hard to really get the sense that they're as students centered as the others are. So we'll continue to grow more co-teaching strategies. But for this year, we really want to go simple and deep and get really good into strategies that we think will give us an added benefit of having two teachers in there.
So the co-teaching as a reality, that is different from the previous year?
No, we have a co-teaching model at Parker. Things that we needed to clean up, it may not have been making the co-teaching model as effective, optimizing the schedule. So it's hard to be in a co-teaching setting when you're working with across four different teachers. It's hard to plan, it's hard to collaborate. So we've done some things to really straighten out the schedule so that it's more effective. But we need to have a co-teaching setting.
Okay, good.
And so you, I'm sorry.
Carter. So go back a slide. Thirty-two percent, twenty percent. Um, that means seventy-eight percent for M.A.N.
M.A.N.
Me. Um, is it unreasonable to ask for at a minimum of fifty percent for both? And I understand the concept of, okay, well, any increase is an increase and an increase is good. But I think, what is it, seventy-five percent to, at least get to the category down and move left? And move, what is, um, um, to get the school right? Assuming it will be, although it's much lower than that. You can put any number. No, 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 right. No, I'm happy to listen. Oh, yeah, ask. Is that?
Yeah.
I agree. I think, I agree on the roundaboutness.
Sure.
How aggressive is too aggressive or how aggressive is not aggressive enough? But again, the numbers don't matter unless we put the action behind it. We're limited to what we can do at Parker with our current schedule configuration. You know, looking at the distance between some of our grade levels and the distributions of kids from proficient to where they currently are is probably another period or period and a half of literacy. And so we could actually look, what else are we not going to do as we start to make some of those changes and adjustments? Yeah, I think this is probably the, where we felt like we could actually deliver this.
Yeah. And we also did follow the same structure of accelerating the state's targets. We doubled that as well to try and keep us at an aggressive pace with the state. But to your point, incremental growth, you know, we move one percentage point to human areas. Politarily, we do one percentage point in M.A.N. That's not acceptable. That's not great growth. So I don't think whether it's from our perspective or the state's perspective, one percentage point is not going to be considered great growth. Even once everything is probably, the state says what the average is. So we know we want more than that.
The other side of your question, David, that theory could plus. That one pulls into this conversation. It could. Yeah, it's a real tip to what else. But I mean, that's a incredibly strong growth for one building. And depending on what the suburbs do and the expansion, it could be.
It would really depend on.
Yeah, because there are buildings that don't even approach those numbers that are recommended.
Do we still have double blocks?
Yeah, it sounds great.
So we are in essence saying that even with the schedule like that, that for many students who get a double block in ELA, that's not enough?
Well, I think depending on the students. So in some cases, it was enough. For example, at seventh grade in ELA, that was our highest growth, what higher at least. We had forty students that got into the seats category at seventh grade in ELA. I think a lot of it had to do with that double block of humanities. Those students really, really pushed and excelled in that class. We have to make the most of, maximize any instructional time we have, whether it's a double block or an individual block. I'm not certain that across the board, we're maximizing instructional time effectively across the board. So from my perspective, you know, we have a lot that we need to do with the Parker schedule. Right now, I don't want us to waste the additional time that we get double block. We need to get really good at shaping up our routines and our instructional time so that when we do get more time, we're not just blowing it in the wind in another way.
Just go one step further. But those classrooms are delivering the most effective growth. We're all in our Patrick kids rooms. We're all in our engaging kids. There was a different physical and emotional experience when we were in those rooms. There's no other way to do it. And we know, you can tell by the strategies, and that's why the off-classroom work that's coming, I think we give our teachers some of the pieces in their toolbox as we're working on those. We have the, we've got the materials. Now we have to start delivering the types of instruction that are going to generate engagement out of the kids, generate wonder.
So the forty student training reference, you just remind us what the profile looks like of the students who take the double block human. Those are higher learners.
I'm sorry.
Okay, what's the profile of the students who take the double?
Yeah, those are our.
So those are our higher. So we would expect them to?
Well, we would typically expect, we should expect them to get into seats. Previously, they were not. They were hanging around in meets. And prior to having the humanities course, been really digging deep on the social studies, utilizing the social studies here in the ELA time. Well, forty of those students were pushed into seats. So going back to a lot of what the elementary schools talked about as well, we have a lot of students who are in meets, but they're right there and they could go further into seats.
Yes, it looks like that too. About their, you speak to their story, but not doing anything. We need to be careful of who is accelerating.
Right. I mean, in those, basically, that is your group that there increases marginal. But I was just particularly interested in that because you called out the forty and the humanities. And then you referenced where you saw a lot of growth. Our students who were all in, Patrick and Taran. So it's fitting a very specific profile of students. I just wanted to be clear on that.
And that goes back to just really wanting consistency across the building. So we tried to really identify a few key things that we want to focus on so that we can get really good little shockage.
Any other questions? And for all the principals who presented.
Thank you.
Thank you. So for everybody who presented, how will you measure yourself? How will you measure yourself against these plans? And how often will you measure yourself against these plans?
Sorry. Um, so when I kind of mentioned about our P.L.C. meeting, what I've found in the past is sometimes you write these plans, you have these action items, and then after you present at the beginning of the year, they kind of sit on the shelf. And it's like, oh, my gosh, we need to present again. One of the shocking ways I've seen you do this was at our P.L.C. meetings. So at least once a month, looking, how's our data going? What is our formative? Because each one of these action items that we presented on to all tonight has a measure with it. How are we measuring it? Not just, oh, it feels good, kids like it. That's not showing us if our data is growing. So I mean, we all have measures that will go with it. So we constantly talking about them each month at a grade level and looking at those. And where's the data trending? What's it showing? What's going well with what we're doing? What's the data saying? And what do we need to change? So it's always an ongoing system with those action items. So that way, we're not coming to that and saying, oh, we thought we were going to money up each month, and we never did that. So making sure that we're touching on those items and looking at the data measures that we go through with it. My plan is to at least start that because there are, we have ELA, we have culture and climate and everything, that at least we take once a month, look at each one of them where we at, to do those to start.
And we have, and we have actually, we have six scheduled meetings already out to review the data plan. So not necessarily every month, but we have our six meetings throughout the year to make sure that we're keeping up with it. You know, depending how long you can take, just sweeping up a ton of budgets. But yeah.
We'll be talking about the students at P.L.C.'s when they occur. And then additionally, I have the meeting scheduled. And we'll be talking more globally of the cohort. But we'll be focused on those students and have data tracking sheets and keep track of their formative assessments so we can see trends and whatnot, and what we need to adjust for this part.
Parker. Plan B time, a similar, or do like in our P.L.C. time, having focused conversations around the data. Again, not just what's the data saying, what are we going to do about it?
Any other questions? Comments? When will these results go home in here? I, individual or October?
Um, there is some cover until then.
Okay. So when it does go out, will you prepare something that helps parents?
Okay.
Helps them understand?
Yes, a lot. A lot of information, yeah. I hope the sit presentations gave you a little bit of insight to the work the principals have done, but also why I can sleep pretty easily. They're professional people. They're focused on kids, they're focused on teachers, and they're focused on making sure that there are opportunities for district offices, you want students to be existent. So I'm thankful to all our principals for their hard work. We've been doing these plans since July. And it's a culmination of a lot of hard work that I really appreciate the teachers paying out to. I'll bring it back. This is the work that's going to be done in the building this year. This is most of what we're doing.
So I will echo on that on behalf of the board. I mean, we absolutely do appreciate all of the work that all of you have put into these plans. We know that these are not created overnight. We are very appreciative of you all in giving us, in conversations about some pieces of this. And of course, this will go on throughout the year because as you all know, we are as committed as you are. So I'm very glad that you are sleeping better at night. There's no reason not to send emails. However, you know, there are things that keep me up at night. And I'm sure there are things that keep you all up at night as well. And so what the plans show is amazing opportunity for all of us to really work collaboratively and be committed in a way that we have never been committed before in this district. I mean, so I was glad to hear collaboration, especially teacher collaboration so much. But I'm also equally thrilled to hear all of you finding creative ways to engage students more in the process and really create a very student-centered environment for a lot of your classrooms. So we appreciate that. But there definitely are things that keep us. And if there weren't things that did keep us up at night, then, you know, we probably wouldn't be up here. I mean, so we are here because we are as committed as you all are. So we thank you for all of your incredibly hard work. And we wish you all success in the world. What do you have? Are you guys on a countdown? We've got hours. Hours, yes. So hopefully you all can sleep.
Sure. One, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I echo everything that Val President said. The one thing that I hope though, that all the principals also try to do is increase the community engagement, increase the participation to maximum amount possible. And third most of all, find a way to get the message out of the good work that's being done. I just cannot even hammer that one up. It's just not getting out. So if you do that, that would be great.
So we do have a few more things, although it does sound like you're wrapping it up. Sorry, Michelle? Close. Um, summer academy updates.
Two minutes of here, let's go there.
Oh, please, please. If you're sleeping now.
Summer academy, thousand and nineteen updates. So again, we're talking about the fact, we had a total number of four hundred and fifteen. So again, we're talking about the fact, we had a total number of four hundred and fifteen students enrolled throughout the district and the entire program. Our in-person students, three hundred and seventy-one. Our virtual academy students, forty-four. We have a parent prep program that also thirty-eight students. We have thirty-three teachers, fourteen parent professionals. We ran six bus routes and our two district classes. Our day-to-day operations, our day began at eight-thirty for our students, eight-fifteen for our staff. We serve breakfast this year. We did all breakfast to all students. And all the kids really seem to be enjoying the breakfast component. They all end the evening together, so that was great. They really look forward to that time. We had approximately ninety minutes of ELA and math per day. With a fifteen-minute mid-break every day for every class, the class really took advantage of that open field and rotating students out to give them that movement. The kids were dismissed at eleven-thirty. The buses left the premises by eleven-fourth every day. Process timeline began planning in March. In March, we had an event meeting where all departments participated from Scott, from buildings to grounds, Amityville, Rhythm, LaBelle, Special Education. And we also had our Transportation Department there that participated in that. In April is when we began to send out invitations. Our entire district did receive the flyer to let them know the summer academy was happening. We did personalize invitations as well to particular students who fell under the thirty-fifty percentile on their math and ELA and math. They did receive a recognition letter. At the Julia High, our students who received a U in two, for two quarters and one subject, they were what we call man hated to attend summer academy. So we had different levels of invitations that went out in April. In May, we had an in-person registration where the parents had all came into Parker and they registered their students. We also took registration throughout all the buildings through the month of May. June was when summer academy commenced on June seventeenth and it ended on July twenty-fifth. Our curriculum, our in-person curriculum, we use a program called Stellace, Late Camper ELA. It was, I thought it was great. It hosted a huge amount of resources and genres for the team screen as far as the literature. For math was the B math component. And there were six modules to each grade level, had six different modules with pre-test and post-test. The teachers did use those pre and post tests to guide instructions to figure out where they need, what they needed to pre-teach or reteach. Our virtual program, we had four virtual instructors. And we did use Khan Academy for math and achieved thousand for ELA. And the parents were given weekly updates as far as what their students, how much, how many, how many times they logged into the program and what, and where they were with the program. Our other guys, those kids were really excited about coming over to Parker. You know, they were happy to bring their attendance down. You know, by the second week of school, they were maybe feeling like they had lived there there the entire school year. So it was really, it was really great to see that. Fireworks reports, all summer academy students, you see fireworks reports on July twenty-fourth. The reports listed the ELA and math strengths and areas of improvement. There were also satisfaction surveys that went out to all teachers and our families. Since from the parents back along, I got six, six surveys. But they were, they were all very positive.
Just six?
Yes, six. So they were, the six surveys that I gave you back were positive in nature. They did, parents, they said they're seeing them today and enjoy summer academy. Moving forward, opportunities for improvement. I can honestly say it was a wonderful course. For me, every day I was looking for opportunities that, things that I needed to improve, you know, the very next day or the very next week. But these opportunities that I outlined here are things that can be changed next year. And starting with the bus routes and class schedules, I think that will be imperative if those went out a couple of weeks prior to the start of summer academy. They didn't go out in that fashion this time, which I think it causes a little confusion for the first day of summer school. Also, if we hope, like the parent information meeting before summer academy begins, not just for the virtual students, but for all of the parents so that they can possibly pick up those class schedules during that time and getting all of their questions asked during that time. I think it will also be beneficial if we had a summer academy website so that parents can go to during summer academy and gather and grab information that they need and personalize, more personalized email address for just specifically to summer academy. One thing I thought about and I did discuss was, I think the curriculum is remedial in nature. We do have the virtual program that is more enriching, but if we offer a more in-between curriculum for those students. Because you have some students who are not grade level behind, or parents just want to prevent that summer slide. So if they had a more intermediate type of curriculum, I think that would be great.
Hold on, one part of your question. All right, so anyway. Is there or in place any way to track the students that participated in their respective schools to see if there's movement from the, let's say, not immediate expectations to be that expectations of exceeding? And the second part of your question, I think, let me. Are we finding out what percentage of those students did you actually send that personal invitation to? Were the youth students? And how many of those actually did participate in class?
Yeah, so to answer the first part of your question, we look at the math data in the fall. So we look at the students who actually participated in summer academy, their spring data, and then when they take it in the fall, we compare that data to see if there was more. So that's to answer that question. And then the second part of your question was the kids who received the invitation, the personalized invitation. So you have to understand, most of those students, they fell below the thirty-fifty percentile on math. So it is optional for them to attend. So I do have numbers for the number of students that we did send those invitations out to. My school, Boston Run Hill, we sent one hundred and thirty-one out. Heather Hill, one hundred and thirty-seven. Parker, one hundred and forty-four. Serena Hills, one hundred and sixty-four. And Wester Avenue, one hundred and sixty-two. So if we go back to the, my very first slide, we had a total of four hundred and fifteen students.
And how many?
Over a thousand, maybe a thousand and sixteen.
Do you just hear a reason why that number isn't there?
Well.
And what can we do to get that number?
Well, I would say, you know, in the summer, a lot of, a lot of kids, you know, go on some vacations. A lot of families have, you know, summer academy, this is just, this is an opinion, so it's not a stat. But summer academy ends at eleven-thirty. So that's, you know, childcare proves to be, you know, an issue for parents. So they don't, they don't have anyone to pick their kid up at eleven-thirty. So most kids are in an all-day summer program. But I would, I would say that that's, that's a, that's like a lot.
That's actually huge. Yeah, I mean, so parents are looking for holiday options for their kids and many are not able to do an activity, even if it's enrichment like that for a couple of hours a day.
This is something that going back seven years in the district, it's been a topic of discussion every year. Every year that I have attended this, this discussion, even as a parent in the audience, it's always been the same. You know, and the question is, well, all right, we're pointing, how do you really get parents to put their kid into summer academy when they really need to, or be big to me? You know, at the end of the day, it's, it's, don't want to.
What I do think, I mean, I like to believe that if, if we were able to partner with the Park District and offer something.
From eleven-thirty to whatever, right?
I do think that would increase the number. Probably thirty, probably more than one. But because it provides greater options. And so I think there are ways to think, I mean, and I'd actually love for you all to explore options of how we can maybe think about that.
And to your point where you mentioned that for a lot of kids, they, it just really was very remedial and, you know, basically they're bored, you know, which might have been the same reason they didn't do well in the regular area anyway. They're just unengaged in their board and they weren't listening. And I can tell you from personal experience with at least one of my children who has gotten a notice saying, hey, we could, think you should, you know, consider this. I looked at it and I, I felt that what I could do with him over the summer, certainly my wife could do with him over the summer, would be more impactful. And, you know, he's doing very well now. And it's specifically because I knew that if, if you put him into a remedial program, then it's just, it's like torture, you know, for, for some kids and for some parents because they're repeating the same struggle that they had the rest of the year.
Yeah, so yeah.
Why would we, why would we design, and I'm saying we do collaborate, it's just you repeat it. Why would we make it more challenging?
Well, I think that's where she would be at.
No, no, I'm agreeing with this. Is there, I'm asking almost like in a rhetorical fashion, we're like, what is it we can do?
And this has been my experience even teaching summer school and high school with kids who failed, you know, sophomore in English. Where, okay, we're going to take all the stuff they did, you know, the whole year, we're going to jam it in. Isn't it spread out evenly over a year? We're going to love it jammed in, you know, for five hours a day, you know. And with some kids, I didn't, this is the high school where I was, it was, you know, a different district. I don't think it was that effective. But I think that what we've been doing in the last couple of years has been a huge improvement from seven years ago. It is definitely, you know, noticeably better than, than I can see the fourth member of the board here is comparing. So I think we're making a lot of progress.
Yeah, because the curriculum for the, for the most part, it builds on those pre-gratual skills that kids need to access the regular curriculum during the regular school year. So it is very helpful, it does help those kids catch up to get to a point, a starting point of where they need to be just to start your curriculum during the regular school year. But then for other kids who, who are in the program, they may need something of a bit more access. So just lining that down for those, those kids that are in the school.
Is that something that we can do? Find that balance? And to what you just said, I guess, I'm searching here that answer, yes, we can.
Well, I think that might be a discussion this year that I think that, you know, we can come back to. Because that's, again, this is, you know, we have a year away till, you know, theoretically next, next summer. But I think that is a, is a good question. And I, we always hope that, yes, you know, you know, the opportunities that we have to improve, we're always looking for. Great, let's, you know, see what we can do the next year.
I think we're moving more towards individualized experiences as opposed to, so finding that speaks about, I don't know if it's the next summer, but certainly by the summer afterwards, I think we'll leverage whether it's all PK twelve or other digital resources to really kind of target that just hard enough level of experience to where students can stay out there and, and you'll demonstrate a lot of progress without just, you know, receiving remedial work because that's the class that they're in, that's not the. So I think we can add this initial kind of perspective on when we come back. This is my big one, especially for, we'll get a couple of holiday options in January.
Is it out of scope to ask parents if they would be interested in a shorter summer school experience, but a full day? Maybe that, oh.
It's probably a two-pronged, can we go shorter? And then can we have a spot in Chicago Heights Park, as you can. Or, you know, I mean, so, so kind of have a couple of conversations so that if we were able to go a little day, wherever, however long, set there on that. In those cases, we're done, there's an option.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, agency nursing contract.
So, so we have an agency nurse Maxim is our agency nurse contract. And we have used them since 2016 as backup when we needed substitutes. We have a very limited cell pool of nurses. We need an RN really to be in the district traditionally, or we can have an LPN. Okay, like an LPN requires supervision. So that's another layer that we have to deal with. You tonight approved the one-on-one agency contract for the one-on-one nurses that we needed. And I've done a comparison here in the report. Our agency Maxim has increased our rates. And while it's an eighteen-point-four percent increase for an LPN and a fourteen-point-six percent, that's for four years. So its average was, for an RN, was three-point-six percent per year. Again, it's higher than the consumer price index. But if we look at the agency rates, and I worked really hard to lower the AHHC rate and the Brightstone rate, I negotiated those rates. Their, their initial rates were higher. Our Maxim agency is right in there. So that's our substitute person. So I'm just presenting this information. We'd like to bring it back for approval at the next meeting in order to maintain our substitutes. And we will, we anticipate that we will need them this year.
Coming?
Thank you.
How many?
Well, a substitute depends on, on any given day, how many we need. But we are currently searching for a nurse who had a resignation. And they're, they reside as a public superintendent. So we need a replacement for that.
Any other questions? Okay, so now we are going to move our, going through action items. We have a motion, please, to approve the personnel report as presented. So moved second. Any questions or comments?
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Grace?
Yes.
Flackman?
Yes.
Linnear?
Yes.
Pleatschuk?
Yes.
Horace?
Yes, and a motion has passed. The bills for the month of August were reviewed by this gentleman.
Yes, I reviewed the bills and I've already asked some questions that I need to add. Frank, I'm satisfied. And therefore, the motion that you accept the total bills for a month in an amount of six hundred seventeen thousand, three dollars in terms of.
Second. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Flackman?
Yes.
Pleatschuk?
Yes.
Linnear?
Yes.
Grace?
Yes.
Pridas?
Yes.
Horace?
Yes, and the motion has passed. We have a motion to approve the purchase of the thought exchange software at a cost of twelve thousand dollars. So second. Any questions?
Yes. I was wondering whether or not we could actually hold off on the vote of this until we get a chance to see software report requested by Cameron. get a chance to see software report for which requested by Cameron.
Do you know that further?
Set up a template of the sheet. School started, so, like realistically, it's probably, maybe in 26.
Is there, is, is, where, was the impact of the downside of not approving this tonight and bringing it to 26?
Well, our first, our first date is October 3rd. We're planning on the 19th, so I would probably say we would just use a little more, because we have, we have a planning meeting on the 19th to set up all the pieces for our orientation, which is on September 30th. First official date is October 3rd. So we're just right in that window where if we, we can actually punt on this, but I would say it's, it's a lot more long-term than just missing this meeting. I would say we just go in a different direction and wait to find opportunities to use this all.
Any other thoughts? Questions or concerns about?
So the question would be money, am I correct?
Correct. The question would be what?
I was wondering the connection between our list of subscription services and approving and approving on this.
So procedurally, you make a motion to table this, if, isn't that what we do? I mean, I, I personally agree to support this, so, you know, if we were to figure out as well, if anybody wanted, is anybody for not tabling this, you know, or, you know, do you want to, based on what you said, you want to commit to this now? So I, I think that procedurally what we do is you make a motion to, to table this till the next meeting, at which point we would have looked at, what was the again?
Well, the game is before this, of all our software subscriptions.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so that I know, everything that you're saying, I know. My question was whether you had any questions or concerns about the purchase of this. So yeah, I mean, so, because if there are issues or concerns and you feel like we need to table until the next one, then okay, so I'm just hoping to see if others have issues. I don't have any issues or concerns. I can vote on this without the other, I still want the other, but I can talk.
In fact, just to do a quick hop off the interstate, I have, right now, we're gonna organize information by department, type of software, type of purpose, annual cost, and then all the requirements. So we'll know exactly what we're doing, but, you know, a big vision software for, on the financial side, it'll be Canvas, it'll be Word doc, it'll be all this, it will be a huge number.
So I can also support this, but I agree, I would also like to see that data. I think every other year, we actually go, we have a conversation about this and just looking at, you know, all of the various things that we pay for and all the different vendors, yeah.
Well, I think that's why some districts were starting to work around consortiums. 60,000 kids, it's a lot easier to try to negotiate a better, per se, click charge or a way.
So perhaps what we do is vote on this now as is, and then we, when we have that information, we will discuss.
So I can put, I can put the template in my Friday update, if everyone's good, as long as we don't, if it's just this information, this is nothing, no.
Okay, because, I pause, because you're not sure when the report will be ready.
Right, I can try to get it by the 26th, but realistically, it could be, that's it.
So, I mean, so I think if we can still get the information and have a conversation about it to figure out whether there's more we need to be doing with that information, or not, then I'd be okay with that.
I guess I might understand the connection between you two. So if the software is necessary for something, and it is a different cost, I like seeing, are we saying that if we get the subscription, whatever, then we would not get this? I don't see how these are connected. That's, that's what we're saying?
No, I, I think what we're saying is that Cameron and David want to put a soft hold until they have a better understanding of all the different software stuff that we're spending money on, and to figure out, do we really need this, are we spending too much, or, or what, like, do we really need it? I think others are saying, you know, we actually support this, we're okay with $12,000, but we still should do some sort of, have some sort of conversation over what are all the various software.
Because this is the software that aids with the strategic plan and the... Right, so that's why I don't see how they're actually connected outside of the money piece, but if it's necessary, I don't...
Then they can start working on the strategic plan, like...
But I don't see the...
So it sounds like...
It's not a patient lead, like, this is gonna blow our budget out, and I don't think that it does, but I just wanted to see other connections, but okay, I got it now.
So then I, I would be okay with going forward with this, but we still have this conversation. I mean, it's probably time for every other to do a conversation on it anyway, and I know it's always been an issue with Cam, I don't know what you're...
Well, we've had some, you know, software that just does not, this is going to graduate within six years, where we say, okay, where's the thing, where's the remedial right?
Right.
And how far is this even going, you know?
Right, so that's a bigger conversation. If this piece, if this is really to aid in the strategic planning process, then we absolutely, we want to stay on target, so we probably should teach a planning process, we probably should go forward, but we should plan to have this conversation about our overall expenditures as it remains to software.
So how about what I can do, for the 26th, is try to use it as a target, at least to say, here's the information that you have. It's vision, it's a process, 35,000 years, it really will, it's all bets up. Then you can...
And a use, can we have a use for it?
I'll give, that's my thought. Type, purpose, all those are great. And then you can at least give a thought, thumbs down, we need a little bit more information, or this is right on, and then we can fill in the first one.
Am I ready to move? Skins Lake Courtney, I don't hear you. Roll call please.
Flackman?
Yes.
Lee Stroud?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Flackman?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes, and the motion has passed, so we will expect the information from you.
Yep, you have your 26th form for counting.
Cam, a motion to approve policies 4160, 665, 7185, and 895 as presented. So, second?
Second.
Any questions? Roll call please.
Lanier?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Lee Stroud?
Yes.
Flackman?
Yes, and the motion has passed. Can I have a motion please to adjourn the meeting at 7:00 PM?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Alright, we need to compare to 11:00. Thank you.